Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Conference Meeting this September 22nd, 2022. Thank you all for being here today. We have, uh, thank you. We have a number of items this afternoon, a lot of discussion items, uh, and, um, a lot of things we've been wanting to talk about for a while. So, um, let us begin. Just give me a second to get to that screen. Okay, um, we have CF1, Expansion of the Beach Business Improvement District. Uh, who will be talking about that?
Yes, Mayor. So we have a discussion on the Beach Business Improvement District and how we may improve opportunities for success to the district and benefits gained by expanding the, this, uh, improvement district. So staff is now prepared to discuss those initiatives, and, uh, for your consideration, Ms. Sarah Spurlock will be handling that now.
Yeah, I think you gotta, you gotta press the button. Just a quick question. Are, is this an imposition of, uh, of the tax? It's not really a tax. It's like an assessment. Are we imposing this on the additional properties, or is this still, or is this a voluntary thing?
This is, this is to expand the boundary.
Expand the boundaries, but those additional properties, are they required to pay, make the payment?
I will, I have to defer that to the city attorney.
Right, so the process will have to involve a study to determine exactly what properties would be encompassed within the geographical expansion. Um, because we do have to develop a fairly apportioned assessment methodology so that makes sure that everything is fair and equitable. And there's a process we have to go through as we did for the creation of the bid, which there's a variety of resolutions and hearings we'd have to have, but that would be determined by the study as to what properties exactly we're dealing with, you know, the, what, what the benefit is and, and what the mechanism would be and.
Okay, but, uh, okay, so that will take place, but is there a point in time where someone can opt out?
My understanding is if you're within the geographical area and you're a business, you're gonna have to pay.
So you can't opt out?
Right.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Spurlock, sorry to interrupt.
Hi, Sarah Spurlock, nighttime economy manager, and I'm also the staff liaison for the Beach Business Improvement District. So the advisory committee, the bid advisory committee has expressed an interest in expanding those boundaries. Um, currently, the boundaries run from roughly Bee Ocean Resort to Sunrise Boulevard, and it's the commercial properties right on A1A. We believe that there is a natural progression to also include the properties west to the intercoastal since they are, uh, getting the benefits of the bid activities anyway. So we, we believe that they should be included and be contributing to the bid. Um, as the city manager and city attorney explained, this is, this is only a process. We're, right now, we're requesting commission's support to start the process of exploring whether or not we should expand those boundaries. We also wanna look at the boundary, um, how do I pull this map up? Oh, okay. We're also looking at the boundary, um, the properties just south of Holiday Drive, which would be the, yeah, it's up. I just didn't see that was up. Um, just south of Bee Ocean, which would be primarily Marriott Harbor Beach and possibly Logomar. So two of the, the biggest, um, recipients of bid funding are the Odyssey Festival and Tortuga, which happen at that south end of the beach. And we believe that those properties, especially Marriott Harbor Beach, sees a lot of benefit from those activities. So we thought that was also, um, a natural progression of the boundaries.
So as far as. Why would you not include Pier 66?
Well, we could, we could look to include anything. That's, that's gonna be quite a bit further south, but we can certainly look at exploring anything.
I mean, because that would be a significant, uh, contribution.
It would.
Based on the formula.
It would.
And, uh, and they may wanna be participate. I mean, those folks seem to be very community oriented, so, um.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we can certainly look at that.
Would that be considered the beach, though?
Well, it's considered, uh, it's on this side of the intercoastal, and, um, uh, I mean, it's just, I'm just throwing it out there.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, the properties west to the intercoastal actually will not, the, the contribution will not be that significant. We believe that those properties should be included simply because they're benefiting from bid activities anyway, and, and they probably should be contributing. Um, the, the two properties that we were looking at south, the two parcels south would contribute, would be quite a significant contribution, and if we were to go to Pier 66, well, obviously, that would be huge. So the, as Alan mentioned, the process starts with a study, and the study would look at whether or not these properties would benefit from bid activities. And, um, after that study, then we, they prepare a fair and equitable assessment to the property owners, um, equitable assessment methodology. And then there's an adoption of the assessment resolution and final assessment. Um, the, this does not require majority support of the commercial properties. However, we would obviously want to get that buy-in and support from the properties, so we would do the proper amount of public outreach.
Vice Mayor, do you have any thoughts on this? This is your district.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Is, so Sarah, is, can the, can the, can there be outreach and just kind of, hey, what would you all think about being part of this and that kind of discussion to, when the mayor mentions Pier 66 or so forth?
Yes.
That, yeah, so, I mean, look, I think it's, it's worth a discussion, Mayor, for Sarah to reach out to those folks and, and see what, what the feedback is.
See what the feedback is.
Yeah, I like it.
Okay, all right.
Yep. Thanks for bringing it up.
Anything else?
And just for clarification, it's commercial properties only. That, that's who gets assessed.
Right, right. Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Michael Fleming, did you wanna say anything? You're good? Yeah, I know, just for questions. Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, moving on to business one, federal funding opportunities update.
Yes, Mayor, so we have the NPO available here with us today. Um, they would like to share updates on federal funding opportunities, uh, that they're currently working on with the region, and what are those regional efforts that are being done to improve mobility and also, uh, safe streets? So with that said, Mr. Ben Rogers will discuss further.
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, Commission. Ben Rogers, Director of Train Station Mobility. Um, as the city manager alluded to, NPO is here today. There's a lot of federal running, uh, funding opportunities that are out there, and there's been a lot of different discussions about them. A lot of the funding opportunities that the city is eligible for would have to be funded through the NPO, um, as a recipient, and then the city as a sub-recipient, or some, uh, methodology thereof where the NPO would be involved. And so I've asked the NPO to come in today to talk to you a little bit about some of those grant opportunities, some of the projects they've kind of already identified or are working on that may be within the city of Fort Lauderdale or within Broward County. Uh, and then, uh, Mayor, as you asked, or requested at the last meeting when we deferred the item, I also asked that they would bring in some, uh, conversations on some large funding opportunities for some of the, the larger projects. Once the NPO is done, I'm gonna ask Karen Warfield to come up and talk to you about, uh, more long-term, uh, projects, um, that we would need to identify and maybe put in some master plan, um, with the NPO so that way they'd be eligible for long-term, uh, federal funding opportunities. So with that, I'm gonna ask Paul Calvresi from the NPO to come up and, and present his information.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Thank you, Commission, Mayor.
And try to speak as close to the microphone as you can. Some, some of us are a little hard of hearing.
Hopefully, nobody was sick. Uh, Paul Calvresi, Broward NPO, uh, thank you for having me. Hopefully, nobody was sick. Paul Calvresi, Broward MPO, thank you for having me this, this afternoon. Greg Stewart sends his regards. He wishes he could be here. So as Ben said, we're gonna give you a 50,000-foot level of what the grant, what the environment for federal grants looks like. With the passing of the bipartisan infrastructure law, nearly a half trillion dollars in new grant funding became available. A lot of these programs are brand new. When Greg Stewart, the executive director of the MPO, and I, and I were up in Washington DC a few months ago, we were asking about one of the programs, and they were literally writing it. So we couldn't get a lot of our questions answered. Some of these are just that new. Here's what's come, what's coming up. I know we see something from June that was a few months ago, but not everything has been pushed out, uh, not, not everything has been pushed out yet. For instance, the railroad crossing elimination program was supposed to come out in June, and that wasn't released until last month.
What, what does NOFO mean? Wanna tell everybody what NOFO means?
The NOFO is the Notice of Funding Opportunity. That is the federal document, which is the, essentially, here's the release, here's the grant. This is everything you need in order to, it's the instruction manual on how to apply for these grants.
Okay.
Good ques, thank you, Mayor. So, the MPO...
We just came from Washington, and my head is spinning with acronyms, okay? And this kept coming up, and I don't think everybody knows what NOFO means, but that's the key document that starts the process going.
Well, we're, we're not doing our job unless we're creating an acronym.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna go through, through more of these grants, but the MPO has looked at and identified which partners might be best suited for these grants. You see, the MPO, we did not identify ourselves for every one of them. So there are a few grant programs that the MPO is anxiously looking towards. One of them is the Protect Program. Once again, brand new. Okay, Promoting Resilient, Protect is also its own acronym. Promoting Resilient Operations for Transformative, Efficient, Cross, and Cost-Saving Transportation. This is this administration's climate action grant. These are, these are coming out, this one's coming out soon. We're reviewing it. We're looking to see if any of the projects and any of our plans match with this. I will say that as the MPO, we were not in the business of creating plans that we could not fund. So historically, there has not been funding for sustainability in these types of programs, so we don't have projects lined up for funding that we were just hoping was going to materialize. We are working with the EV corridor community. The state is taking the lead on that. Unfortunately, most of their investment on their EV corridors is towards the northern part of the state.
So, so how would that work if, if the MPO got funding for EV charging stations? Would each city have to apply through you to get charging stations? How, have you thought that through yet? How, how we, I mean, we'd love to see charging stations throughout our city, especially these, these new charging stations that, that are, you know, supercharged, that don't take a whole day to get, you know, 50 miles worth of charge. But, um, have you, has that been thought through yet? Or just still waiting?
It, it depends on the nature of the grant. Uh, this grant in particular, the MPO wouldn't bring down a sum of funds to then distribute, it would be a discreet number of projects. So let's say, Fort Lauderdale, I'm making up numbers here, Fort Lauderdale wanted 20 EV chargers, and Hollywood wanted 10, and Sunrise wanted another 10. We would package all of that up as one project and submit that for one grant.
Okay.
Uh, the challenge with these EV charging stations is, and I'm speaking as a planner here, is that they need, that they want them in commercial areas. They want them parking lots, malls, et cetera. But meanwhile, your cars, you know, it sleeps at home like you do. So there's a little bit of a disconnect in where you're going to charge it versus where it's going to be.
But that's where it takes all night to charge. I mean, everybody who wants a charging station in their own home, um, yeah, you can leave it overnight, and you know your car's gonna be charged in the morning. But for those intermittent charges, um, like Tesla has them out at the Galleria, there must be 20 of them, and they're, they takes, what does it take, like 30 minutes or so to charge, fully charge your car? Is, I think, are we looking to do something like that in our communities?
Uh, we're, at the MPO, we're letting that be community-led, because these are very site-specific, and we don't have the land use authority to dictate where the charger's going. So if the, this really needs to be more of a grassroots effort, and bring it up, and we're gonna talk about coordination towards the, um, middle part of this presentation. But bring that up, and the more cities we can get to get the package to make this a much bigger ask.
Okay.
The more, 'cause it, it takes as much manpower to administer $1 million as it does $1.
I get that, okay.
Last week, the MPO, um, in partnership with Broward County, submitted the Grant for the Safe Streets and Roads for All program. We submitted on the planning side. As the MPO, as the lead applicant, we were eligible to bring $5 million in federal funds to this area. Broward County is providing in-kind match through studies that they have ongoing and will be conducting. Okay. This would create, in, at the end of this, we would have essentially a six-and-a-quarter-million-dollar safety, road safety plan that covers the entire county. Now, once again, the plan is good, but then that opens us up for the $400 million of capital funding that the Safe Streets and Roads for All program also offers on the other side of it. Railroad Crossing Elimination Program, this, we're working with Brightline on, on this. Brightline has identified 27 crossings that do not have any sort of safety, that does not have safety equipment above and beyond the minimum, okay, throughout the county. And this grant would bring everything up above and beyond. So your medians, your quad gates, it would effectively seal the corridor and prevent drivers from going the wrong way around the gates, and hopefully reduce the number of crashes and accidents in our region. This is a $24 million opportunity, so of that, we need 20%. And we're working with, in parallel with the cities and the counties, to try and collect the money and leverage that.
Do you know if we have crossings in the county right now that have that level of safety?
Quad gates?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have about 29 of them.
Do we see zero accident impacts at those?
For the most part, yes. There, the crashes are a combination of, and I'm sorry to say, suicides. Um, people, bad behavior, going around the gates, or sometimes just stopped on them.
Right. But do the quad gates prevent the going around, or?
Yes, they seal the corridor. So if you go up to Sis Trunk.
Yep.
And the FEC, you'll see.
Okay.
Quad gates there.
Got it. Okay, good. So we see the dramatic reduction in incidents where you have the quad gate?
Correct.
Okay, great, thanks.
And this is a lot of date. We just got word today that this grant is actually due on October 11th.
And let me just pause there. Mayor, other commission, have we heard any news about the quiet zones and the desire to do away with those, or Greg?
Ben can give us an update, but I think they're still studying that.
They're, are they still studying?
Yeah, so we've been working closely with the MPO. The MPO has taken the regional leadership role and coordinated all the community, uh, communities, since there's multiple communities that are impacted. Um, we've analyzed each of the intersections that are in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and we're working on a plan right now on what improvements we could bolster. And to Paul's point, this grant is gonna be a key, uh, and so we'll have to look into where that, um, local match comes from, and working with the county and each municipality to try to figure out how we fund that match, because a, a lot of this infrastructure is very expensive and high-priced.
But Ben, I thought the, I thought the FECR was looking at doing away with the quiet zone. They were studying it.
Yes, so they...
Do you know the status of that, or what they're?
Yes, so they, they have been reviewing it, I believe, and, and Paul can speak better than I on this, that we're waiting on them to give us a formal notification.
Okay.
Of what they're requesting and what the actions would, uh, have to be to mitigate their concerns, to keep the quiet zone in place. And so right now, we're.
Got you.
Proactively working on a plan, so that way when that letter comes in, that we can respond quickly and appropriately.
Oh, good. So we're anticipating what their concerns and mitigating suggestions might be? Is that?
That, that's my understanding.
Okay. Is that?
Yeah, it's the Federal Railroad Administration, the FRA, who is looked at, not just our corridor, but in other fives throughout the country.
Right. Do you know when their findings or recommendations?
No, we, we keep being told next month.
Sorry?
Next month. They keep telling us.
Next month, okay, thanks.
Two months ago, they told us next month.
Okay, thank you.
So with all this grant information coming out, and remember, coordination is key. This is more for staff, but FDOT is hosting a regional grant information session. That's October 12th. And I cannot stress how much coordination is important to, to this. One of the things that, when we go up to DC, the grant reviewers do not wanna see are cannibalistic applications. So, uh, Parkland and Coral Springs, or let's say Parkland and Hallendale Beach. For all intent and purposes, up in DC, those two cities are in the same region. They don't wanna see them going after the same grant and competing with each other. Shows a lack of coordination. When we're looking at these grants, we're trying to partner, bring our best practices, bring good ideas together. And I'm proud to say the city of Fort Lauderdale is participating in this very actively and very often. The city is partnering with Wilton Matters in Oakland Park to go after, um, the Reconnecting Communities grant. And by the city's partnering together, okay, not only you're not competing against each other, you're not competing against each other, but you're cooperating, and that's actually a bonus points on the grant application. So we actually, um, host this meeting every Thursday. We have one this afternoon. If you're not doing anything between four and five, please join. Okay. Um, before I get into the, actually, no. So as we get into these big projects, so the mega projects, one of the things that this administration's doing, they have been listening to the public. We, there was a bit of frustration, because you have mega infra, rural transportation, and each of these grants are large. They cost a lot of money and resources to apply for. And sometimes, the Venn diagram of what they do is in your perfect circle. So, you know, you taking this gamble, how do you know which one to go after? So what the administration's doing is they're condensing them. So it's one application. They'll take your application and sort it into the right pot, which, which we appreciate. So looking at this, they have, once again, another acronym, MPDG, Multimodal Project Discretionary Grant Opportunity, where they took three grant programs and combined it into one application. Your mega, infra, and rural. I'm not gonna discuss the rural, because we're obviously not that. Okay? Infra awards, competitive, um, there's nearly $7 billion over the life of this bill. Okay? Projects that improve safety, generate economic benefits, reduce congestion, et cetera. And this is very similar, you'll see, to the mega. Alright. Key takeaways here on the, on the mega. Okay? May be used for up to 60% of eligible cost. Typically, it's an 80/20 split. This is a 60/40. Okay? In the case of mega, you're looking for projects that are greater than $500 million in cost. Okay? Infra, up to 100 million. And the key thing here is that these projects must be cost-effective, which is the way for the government to say it needs a benefit-cost analysis. The long-time benefits of this to the community, to the area, must outweigh this initial cost. Now, how do you get ready for these? Okay, first thing is that for a project like this, it has to be in a government document, which is the Broward MPO's Metropolitan Transportation Plan, the MTP, which I know Karen's going to speak about. Also, these projects, you need to ensure that you have a long-term committed funding source for the operations and maintenance, and that you also have the agreements in place so that you can build the capital project that you are proposing. And these have been successful across the country of building major bridges, tunnels, et cetera, that were out of reach for certain communities. So with that, that's where we are with grants, like I said, at a very high level.
Okay. Anyone have any questions, or Paul?
Well, only, I guess, from staff as well, but, so where, where are we in our city with regards to all these opportunities and all of our needs, and?
I think that, uh, I think that the city manager would be able to present us with, uh, a summary of what we experienced this past couple of days. We had tremendous.
Great.
Meetings with, uh, with USDOT, and I think we're, he's gonna tell you some surprising results that we, we, uh, we learned.
I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Will that include tunnel discussion or updated?
It'll include tunnel, it'll include City Hall.
Okay, great.
Believe it or not. Um, and, uh, but, um, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna short-change you with a, with a, just tidbits. I think the city manager wants to give us a comprehensive, uh, report when he has a minute, alright?
Excellent. So I actually do have a question, but I, I wanna just pivot a little bit from here, but while we have the benefit of you being here. I wanted to mention that I looked at a document from the Greater Fort Lauderdale Chamber of Commerce. They had a transportation subcommittee meeting on August 22nd at 10:00 AM. Uh, Matt Broward, uh, and they put out this document that was all about all of the, um, once-sent Certex funding and projects, and they had three pages on projects for 2023 through 2027. Municipal projects, five-year, um, and I, you know, I went through all three pages, one, two, three, and I, I was kind of like, oh, boy, where's Fort Lauderdale? And I, I looked at these pages, and I say to myself, well, that one-cent Certex, a huge portion of that must be coming from the city of Fort Lauderdale. But yet, when I look at these projects that are listed on these three pages, we're really nowhere to be seen. We have one project that's listed that's, um, now looks like it's gonna be moving FY23 from FY22, and that's the One Way Pairs project. Other than that, we're just nowhere, we're nowhere, nowhere to be seen on these pages. So I just need some help understanding why the city that would be principally funding this, this transportation, one-cent Certex, is so not represented in any of these projects.
So I, I can try to answer that. Um, each year, the, the Certex program allows the city to submit applications. Uh, we have the year to build the applications and submit them. There's a scorecard for each of those projects. And based off of that, the MPO and their consultants rank and recommend projects to the county. The county then takes that recommendation, and they take it to their, 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 uh, commission, and they approve a ranking of how the dollars will be allocated. Over the last couple of years, the city of Fort Lauderdale has not been successfully ranked high enough to receive funding.
So what is with that?
So...
I mean, they can skew, they can game the, the scoring mechanism to exclude us, but the bottom line is, as the commissioner has said, where, you know, where's, where, where's our share? We contribute over 30% of that tax money. And that, and, I mean, we really need to, like, get into this, Ben.
Yeah, absolutely.
We just can't let them control the situ, control the, you know, the process and say, oh, well, you didn't rank high enough, so you're excluded. If they're gaming the ranking system in order to exclude us, that's not right. So, so we need to have a meeting about this at some point, because we do have projects. We have significant projects. And, and I think that the problem is that, you know, this city is being, is being finessed out, because the county wants to use this money for their own projects. For example, the connector between the airport and the seaport, which frankly, is a, is a meritorious project. But, but it doesn't take up all the money, you know?
And I know that a major criteria, Mayor, is, you know, looking at, uh, making it easier for traffic to move, widening roads, creating, you know, more lanes. But we're built out. Fort Lauderdale is, Fort Lauderdale is not Weston. We're not Cooper City. We're not, we're not, when I look at all of these cities here, we don't have the land. We don't, we don't have the wherewithal. We wanna, we don't have the wherewithal to meet this criteria, but I think we need to really raise a stink. Now, bear with me. I'm just gonna go through this really quickly. We have one project. Then listen to this. These are all the other funded projects between 2023 and 2027. Coral Springs, Pompano Beach, Pembroke Pines, Lauderdale Lakes, Wilton Matters, Sunrise, Weston, Deerfield Beach, Camerac, Lighthouse Point, Margate, Coral Springs, again. Some of these will be repeated, 'cause they have multiple projects that are getting funded. Hollywood, Miramar, Lauderdale Lakes, Sunrise, again, Davie, Wilton Matters, again, West Park, Weston, again, Pembroke Park, Deerfield Beach, Cooper City, Margate, Coral Springs, again, Miramar, Lauderdale Lakes, Hallendale Beach, Davie, Coconut Creek, West Park, Pompano Beach, Pembroke Park, Parkland, Margate, Hollywood, again, Miramar, again, West Park, Davie, again, Weston, again, Davie, again, Oakland Park, Davie, again, Lauderdale, Oakland Park, Coral Springs, Hallendale Beach, North Lauderdale, Lauderdale Lakes, Margate. You, you get what I'm saying? It's, I just find this unacceptable, unacceptable.
Well, I do too, and I, we had this experience, and then we had the meeting with the county, right? They came here to the commission and, and just... They came here to the commission and, and just, refresh my memory, but wasn't there a commitment going forward that we were going to be, there was going to be a correction, Ben? I thought there was, our projects would be involved, there, remind me what we agreed to there, that?
Yeah, so first off, there's a couple of things. One, in the first cycle, we did have a couple of projects that were awarded, and they're in different phases of the process right now. Some of them, we have not submitted to scope documents that were required to. Some of them were going back and forth in negotiations of the legal documents and the funding agreements, and some of them, we actually had to withdraw because they deemed them ineligible after they were awarded. To your question, Vice Mayor, when the county was here, they talked about the program as a whole, and they focus on what's called the 10% that goes to the municipalities. And of that 10%, it's somewhere, I want to say between 30, $35 million a year. I could be wrong, but I think it's somewhere in that ballpark. That is the starting point for the city's funding source. Then they subtract or withdraw any funds that go to the Community Shuttle Program. So the city of Fort Lauderdale receives 1.2 or 1.3 million dollars a year for the Community Shuttle Program. Then they withdraw a couple other things, and whatever's left goes to these capital improvement projects. Right now, there's some conversation on how that process looks, and I have to defer to the county attorney, or the city attorney on the interpretation the county has taken, but right now, they're looking at some contractual modifications to the program as well.
I mean, are we doing something wrong?
Well, can I tell you, I bring this, I bring these conversations up at the MPO meeting too. And, and, you know, process is always, you know, the wall, right? So we need to maybe have a workshop amongst ourselves and talk about strategy and, and have a conversation. I've, I've been attempting to have a meeting with the new administrator since she became administrator, and all I do is get canceled appointments. So I don't know whether they're afraid of us, I don't know whether, you know, they, they, they anticipate what we're trying to, what we're trying to apply for, but, you know, this, this, which gets very, very frustrating. And, and Commissioner, your words are well said, and I think that we need to really push forward. I mean, we have still many, many years for this funding mechanism to be available to us, but we have some immediate needs. We're talking about building a tunnel. You know, we have now gotten the price of the tunnel well under $1 billion from 4 billion. I mean, you know, the, these things are, these things are within reach and certainly affordable. So the one way pairing, we know that that was stalled at the county level for a little while. Now it's back, I'm told through the executive director, that it's back on, is back on the table. But, but we have some significant projects. Unfortunately, because we are a mature, built out city, it gets more complicated to do transportation solutions. You know, we can't just say, oh, well, we can, we can reduce the traffic by adding a lane. You know, we, we're not Cooper City, we're not Coral Springs, we don't have the real estate or the right of way to be able to do that. We have to go up or down. We have the Tesla Tunnel, you know? Moving forward on that, we're going to hear more about that today. And, you know, these are, these are innovative, creative solutions to transportation challenges that are not even contemplated by the county. Okay? So we need to participate in maybe changing some definitions, and I intend to bring, I intend to bring that up at the future MPO meeting. But I hear you.
Yeah, it's, it's just frustrating. We also worked for a few years on our La Solis Mobility Plan. That certainly is all about transportation and mobility. We have been kicking around Breakers Avenue since you've been a commissioner in 2003. Our city did put forward $5 million for Breakers Avenue. That's still languishing. Everything just seems to just languish. Anyway, thank you. So Mayor, I would love for you to be able to get someone's attention and have a meeting and just figure it out, but I just, you know, when I looked at the, when I looked at this document, and I looked at these three pages.
I want that list so I can take it with me to the next MPO meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I'll give you a whole.
Maybe you should give it to Paul.
Yeah, I mean, again, this was the Transportation Subcommittee meeting on August 22nd at the Greater Fort Lauderdale Chamber of Commerce, and this document was presented by Broward, Matt Broward. And when I read these pages, I said, you've got to be kidding me. So anyway, thank you for listening, and I, I really hope that we can work together because, as you said, Fort Lauderdale is providing 30% of the money.
At least.
At least 30. Do we, no, what is the total collected so far? Do we have any idea, the overall total?
I'd have to go, I'd have to reach out to the county. 350 million a year?
Well, it was originally anticipated to, to collect 19 billion, I believe, over the course of the 30 years.
I mean, we had COVID, and do we know where we are now at the beginning?
Paul just noted that he thinks it's somewhere around 350 million per year.
350 million a year? And 100 million of that comes from Fort Lauderdale?
Yeah.
Well.
It's estimated, yes.
It's estimated. So 150 million is coming from Fort Lauderdale, estimated, and right now, we're getting 6 million in the next five years. So there's a real, is there a disconnect there? We supplied 100 million, and we're getting 6 million over the next six years.
Well, you're a teacher, you do the math.
Well, I didn't teach math, but I don't think, you need to be a math teacher to figure out that we're getting the short end of the stick on this one, so, thank you.
Okay.
That's enough. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the, the last thing we had for our presentation is that as part of the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, that is what allows federal dollars to fund on some of these major projects that we have to have in that plan. Our, we have, I believe, next month scheduled to bring back some projects to you to approve so that we can insert them into the MPO's plan. And so I was going to have Karen give you a quick update on that to see if there's any projects missing or any, any feedback that you have.
Okay. Great.
And one last thought, Mayor. I will say that this city was very proactive in advocating for that vote, for this, for this to pass, for the 1% tax. Fort Lauderdale was very proactive in supporting this county initiative to collect these funds for transportation. And so just wanted to make that point as well. Thank you.
And I encourage you to each meet with members of the County Commission. We'll have a new County Commissioner soon, and, you know, you know, Commissioner McKenzie will, can be a great advocate for us on the County Commission as we try to seek more, more dollars that are due to our city. You know, we've never had, we haven't had a representative from Fort Lauderdale on the County Commission for, what, a couple decades now?
In a minute.
Right?
Yes.
So, all right. Thank you. Oh, hi Karen.
I'll be, I'll be super quick.
They get at the boxing ring here?
Karen Horffel, the City Transportation Planning Manager. And just to give a little background of, from the transportation planning side, how we approach these projects, and as Ben said, the Metropolitan Transportation Plan that the MPO prepares every five years, they update. It's a 25 year plan. We're very involved in that process, and I think, Mayor, you were involved five years ago when we sat down upstairs and went through all of our projects. That'll be coming up soon, but in the middle of those cycles, we do get involved in things that come up that maybe weren't priorities five years ago. So La Solis is a great example. We created the vision, we have a vision, but we need to get the next steps in the budget. We have money for design, but how do we start planning for construction? So we will include projects like that so that we make sure it's in the MPO's regional plan as a project, so that if federal funding comes along, and as they talked about, there's lots of different criteria and standards and things you have to fit into that box, but if plans and projects come together that fit into those boxes, we put them in those boxes as much as we can, I was saying. I put my eggs in every basket I can to see what we get back for funding.
Right. But, but Karen, remember, five years ago, none of these ideas.
Far right in the middle of it.
Yeah, I know. I have a split personality. Five years ago, these projects weren't even thought of, right? Because times change, ideas change, you know, new, new opportunities come about. So we're not going to be anchored by what we talked about five years ago, right?
No, so that is what Ben talked about at our, probably your next meeting or the one right after, we'll have an item before you of kind of the new priorities in the midterm to get them into the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, get them, if they're not, you know, the super big ones will be in the MTP, but even the small ones will have to go into their Transportation Improvement Program to make sure that they're there. So we've started coming up with, you know, the tunnel, La Solis, Lauder Trail, those, if we still need Breakers money, putting all those in as city priorities to make sure that they're eligible for funding when it comes up. And I know just, one of the opportunities that everybody has talked about is reconnecting communities. We are participating in that with Wilton Matters in Oakland Park to see how we can improve infrastructure for vehicles and multimodal from Sunrise north into where the future Coastal Link Station will be on Oakland Park and Dixie for our residents in that area to be able to access. So we're excited about that. Again, you know, 13th Street or 15th Ave, things that we have on our needs list can be put in that bucket.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone have any other questions?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the La Solis project, and there was a next step. And I know we've been working on that project for a long time. Please explain to me, and actually to, to the public, why isn't that project in the Harper at MPO being funded? Just, just walk me through that so I can understand.
So that's a really good question.
Yep, so, so that is, like the mayor mentioned, it's something that has come up in the last few years, and every five years is their cycle. So the commission allocated money to do the vision plan about four or five years ago, just after the MTP was in the process. So we work through the city funded, what is our vision as a community from Andrews to A1A, and get our vision together to know what we even want. So we just, the commission approved that, is it last year? I know the last couple of years have been a blur, but last year, I believe, the commission endorsed that plan, so now we know what we're asking for. So that's what we're going to put into the MTP for construction, because we have that vision of what we're asking for. And then in the budget, starting in October, we have money to start that design. So we'll be even that one step further to be eligible, construction ready for projects.
Thank you.
All right, great. Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much, Karen.
Thank you.
Ben, do you want to add anything else? Paul, are you through with us? Thank you. Okay, moving on to Business Two, the sewer laterals installation presentation.
Yes, Mayor, so staff was requested to examine the current ordinance related to sewer laterals and connectivity. So now staff is ready to present information on what are the current practices, consideration for alternative practices, and what are those financial implications? We have Abby that will talk about this topic.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner. Name's Talal Abicaram, Assistant Public Works Director for Utilities. Thank you for the opportunity to have this discussion today. This issue came up about several months ago, and the commission asked us to take another look at our current practices and current ordinance that, that are in the book about sewer lateral installation. The triggering effect was a 2014 ordinance change that was put in place around December 2nd. It's an exhibit in the attachment to the case whereby the city places or placed the responsibility of installation of sewer lateral on the contractor all the way from the home side to the gravity main that is in the street. That practice and that ordinance has been in effect since 2014 until currently. And what, what we are here today is to discuss that practice. This is depicted in the current picture that is, you see on the screen. Basically, the responsibility now is in the homeowner or the developer to install the lateral all the way from the house to the gravity main on the street. This slide is to depict the current practice that we have in terms of maintenance of the lateral. Currently, the city is responsible for maintaining of the lateral or any blockage from the street to the property line, and the homeowner is responsible for the maintenance from the property line all the way to the home. For the general public and the folks, a quick definition, what we talk about sewer lateral or lateral, we mean the pipeline that goes from the house all the way to the edge of the property where the yellow line is going all the way down to the street to the manhole. Essentially, it's got two components, one on the owner's side, one on the street side. The two vertical white sticks that you show on the screen are what we call a cleanout. Those are important component of the lateral that allow for maintenance if that lateral is plugged or clogged for any reason. The flow in this pipe is strictly a gravity flow, does not a pressurized system, and gravity flow mean that the water or the liquid move from the high elevation to the lowest elevation, so that installation has a, a slope to it. A little bit of a historical perspective, the city installed a lot of lateral as part of the waterworks project that we extended the sewer system into unsoared area, and these installation was relatively easy. When the streets is open, you put in the lateral, and it was not a big issue. 2011 to 2014, the city crew and city staff was installing lateral with the assistance of contractor at some times via an ordinance, and that ordinance stipulated a $3,500 flat fee for that installation. Somewhere about 2014, staff brought the financial and the cost of these installation to the city manager and brought up the ordinance change or the amendment to the ordinance in 2014 that resulted to the placing the responsibility on the contractor and the homeowner. And the key driver for that was basically cost. It was costing us about $17,000 for that installation in 2014. The city was collecting about 3,500, so it was not a viable thing. And we've been under current practice for the last seven or eight years. Consideration for the installation of the sewer line, those are typical that you come across, the slope, the type of material, whether there is a sidewalk or not, and the condition of the sewer line in the street. So before we get into the analysis about what we have, it was prudent to separate the installation into two categories. The first category, what we described is the shallow or the shallower, and that's the, the lateral that are installed somewhere between three feet to five feet. They're relatively shallow. It's an open cut construction. You open the street, you put them, of course, there is baniness of traffic, and there is all kind of logistics involved, but most of the time, there is no de-watering, and there is no trench stabilization and all of that. The second category is when you go into deeper installation. That's where the troubles start. You're going from six feet to 12 to 15. That's a heavy construction. You get a de-watering, whether it's a pumping or a well point system, you're going to have a diesel tank box up on the road to filter that de-watered water before you dispose of it. You have to stabilize the trench, and it's a lot more encumbersome type of construction on the streets. We look at that two category from a cost perspective, and that's what we have. For installation, six feet or under, if it's done by city crew, the average cost is about $6,000 to $7,000 in installation. Contractor, they're running $10,000 to $12,000 in installation. For the deeper one, the city, we're not doing any of that stuff because we don't have the capability. We're doing some work with our annual utility repair contractors, and the cost is running way high there. And that's, that's the numbers somewhere between $58,000 to $60,000. Of course, every installation is different. You can predict on the depth, where you are, what you have, as well as the length and the condition. So the question came in, what would it take for the city to establish an internal capability for doing deep construction? Most of the construction that we do now in terms of pipe repairs or anything major, as the majority of you know, is contracted out to outside contractor. So three labor, three categories of cost, the labor cost, the equipment cost, and the tool and the incidentals, we're tallying about a million, million two in terms of establishing that capability. And clearly, there is, there is an escalator in terms of a labor cost on an annual basis and equipment cost. Keeping in mind that you, you can't and you don't establish that capability on the flip of a switch. It's going to take a while to purchase the equipment, train the folks, and have a solid unit to do that type of business. So basically, that's what summarized all of the costs and what can be done. On the first line, if the city installed the shallow, it's done by a city crew, and if the city crew are not available to do that installation, it would be contracted out at 12,000 a pop. That would require a change in the current ordinance. And the budget impact, the double asterisk is the importance part. And that is, if I have a sewer crew installing lateral, then that sewer crew is not doing maintenance on the system. And since 2015, moving to 2017. sewer crew is not doing maintenance on the system. And since 2015, moving to 2017 and 19, maintenance of the system and replacement of the system is becoming a top priority for us. Second line is installing at the deep installation. Clearly, this is a contractor item. We'll be going to a contractor, whether that's a separate contract that we solicit for, or we have a contract now with three providers, but that would require increasing or funding of about a million and a half. And clearly, third line, that would be no change in the current practice, and that would not require any change in the ordinance. So I would be reminiscent, if I don't do my research and my homework, we called around to all the municipalities around us, about a dozen folks that we asked them, utility director and folks who work with this, like, what are you guys doing? And pretty much the results that you see on the screen is what we got in response. The majority of the folks are doing the same thing that we're doing. There seems to be a consensus among the majority, if not all of the municipality, that that item is better to be subcontracted out. So city staff and limited crews that are available in all these municipalities are busy on maintaining the system. So this is really an interesting survey that came through. There's a couple municipality have a different way of doing it, but the number and the size, it's not all that, it's not all that big in that. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions.
Any questions?
Actually, I just want to point out a couple of things. I raised this question. I raised it previous commission. I'm raising it again. And if you go back to your illustration with the house and the laterals and how all that works and...
This one, Commissioner?
In your presentation, you pointed out that to the left, if I'm looking at it and if you're seeing it on the screen, it would be to your left is the city's responsibility. To the right is the homeowner's responsibility. We had an ordinance put in place when we eliminated septic tanks from our city, that everyone comes online and tap in. So if you're being forced by ordinance to come online, to me, you would think that the city, who's responsible for everything to the left, should provide that opportunity to hook up, since you forced me to abandon my septic tank and hook up to your sewer. Somewhere in 13 and 14, we decided that we were going to put this responsibility on the homeowner. And to me, I probably won't win this debate, but what I want to illustrate is we're investing all this money in our infrastructure now. I think you said 15, 16, 17, we were forced to go back maintaining our infrastructure because we were forced to. It blew up. And then we redirected staff and our energy with the bonds that we passed to take care of the property. And now we're going to try to maintain our sewer system moving forward. My thing is, we're putting this almost bigging a dollar investment in our infrastructure, and we're going to allow a contractor on the right side who's building the house to go to the left side and install the system that by your own admission, after six feet deep, can be complicated even beyond your own capabilities. And then they cover it up, and they go away, and then 10, 15, 20 years from now, we're looking at, you know, an issue in our infrastructure. So my whole reason for raising this question is just the protection of the city responsibilities act. I know there's costs involved. There were costs involved before, but we forced the city to come online. And when you look at some of the comparisons you gave in the other chart, where you said there are other cities that are doing it, if you look at the definition of the cities that are doing it, one, Pompano, if an additional lateral is needed, then the city would put it, the city would put it in, and the homeowner pays for it.
The first one, the city installed in Pompano Beach, from what we got from the survey, and the second one...
If they abandoned a septic tank, we're forced to come online, Broward County.
That's Broward County. Broward County installation and current practice is only if it's involved a septic tank.
Right, abandonment of septic tank, right, which we're saying the same thing. However, when they force you to come online, they provided the laterals. The laterals were there. So they're not looking for any new laterals unless it's a vacant lot somewhere that's been sitting for 30 years, and still has that septic tank in the back because no one took the responsibility, ownership of that property. But when a new person purchases it, hires a contractor, he comes out, he finds a septic tank in the back, I just did one in Washington Park, it was a church. I had to abandon the septic tank, and they provided the lateral for me. Even in Pompano, we were doing three or four down there now. This is not about me. It's about protecting the city's infrastructure because in Pompano right now, three lots, I call for a lateral locate. If it's not there, Pompano provides it, no cost to me, other than what I pay, other than what I pay like anybody else to hook up to the city's infrastructure. So that's the reason why I brought this up. I know the cost looks tremendous, but infrastructure, no matter where it is, is costly to install, it's costly to maintain. And if we don't maintain it, we learned the hard way when we didn't maintain it before that it crumbled. It crumbled. And you start looking at some of these other cities, the newer cities, they're not experiencing what a 100-plus-year city is experiencing by having an older and more fragile infrastructure. So my argument or my debate would be that the city deals with this piece. And I just wanted to put that out there for the record. And I understand your heavy lifting this, but at the same time, my concern is protecting the integrity of the city and not letting any body tour around with our infrastructure. If it's a, if it's a commercial project, like we've seen how the downtown grows, those contractors have the experience, and they're already putting in, putting in infrastructure to facilitate the higher units of residents or what have you. But a single-family home contractor torn around with our infrastructure, to me, is just an accident waiting to happen. And I thank you for the presentation. If nothing comes out of it, I had the opportunity to speak to the issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Just a quick note is, the septic tank conversion program is a serious discussion now that is happening at the Water Advisory Board, the Broward County Water Advisory Board. There is a big push about moving that current ordinance and current practices into enforcement. It's a huge discussion. There is many municipalities that have a large SWAT that are still on septic. It's a huge financial discussion that nobody seems to have a handle on in term of the cost, because it's very expensive for a single homeowner. Essentially, you're hooking up to a new system. You have to abandon the septic tank by permit, and all of these are big costs. So those discussions are happening. With regard to the concern about the system, the current ordinance and the DSD processes, the Building Department process, it's done through a permit system...
Right.
Whereby a single-family homeowner...
Right.
Will file for a permit, application. The permit is reviewed. It's got a drawings. It's got a specification. A permit is given. The installation is done by a licensed underground construction or a general contractor or a licensed plumber. So there is a licensing requirement. DSD have a inspection component...
I'm familiar with, I'm familiar with all of that.
Yeah.
And it's clearly indicated in your diagram that that person goes and obtained these permissions to do that. Again, my concern is only that, once you cross the residence responsibility and go into the city's infrastructure, it concerns me. And I've applied for permits for years. My father was a contractor. He's done it. I mean, this is not a Robert McKenzie thing. This is a industry thing. I have homes that I own that have septic tank systems that, I really like those systems because I don't have to pay the city these astronomical dollars to maintain my septic system, which I can do myself based on a single-family knowledgeable in that area. And you'll find these pockets throughout the city, in particularly in plantation. A lot of those folks don't want to come online because when it comes online, there's a cost. There's an astronomical cost. So we, as a city, forced our residents to come online, time certain. They did that, and now when there are others that are dwindling single-family lots and things of that nature, and some of the infrastructure improvements that we've done here lately, we even came in and when we lined our sewers, we kind of created a block it so you can't tap into some of those systems. But that was us lining to protect our infrastructure as it blew up. Now, a person purchases that lot and tries to build, and they run into this system that we put in place. Now, we, or the industry still has to come down and say, hey, I want permission to go out and work on your infrastructure city, when they shouldn't. They should just have to put the lateral from the house, as you see in the diagram, to the property line and tap into the city's holes, if you will, to permit or allow their sewage or waste to leave their home, their systems, and go into our system, whether it's a gravity main or what have you, to go out to where we treat it and make sure it's environmentally safe and how we gather. That is all that I'm talking about. You're speaking from a, from a budget perspective. I'm speaking from what could happen years from now with this system, because you could say it's a general contractor. You could say you hired a plumber. You can say you hired an engineer, but to what degree, to what level of understanding do we have on our infrastructure that runs our entire city?
Thank you for the feedback noted.
Can I ask, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I mean, let me, you have any questions first?
Yeah, I do.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mayor.
All right. So I just want to put this into, you know, layman's terms. So, so we have a home, and we have, we have, and at one point in time, we had the Water Works project. In fact, back when you...
Yeah.
I think I even voted for it, right. And, I mean, I know, Commissioner, you're saying we force people to be on it, but the reality was, and the thinking at the time was, that when people have septic tanks, they're putrefying the...
It's environmental. I agree with all that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They putrefy the aquifer with sewage that comes from the house, and the whole idea was to capture all of that through a city sewer line and get rid of all of that. So, you know, all right. So we're all good with that.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So then there came a point in time where we had to, we had to build the line from the house to the city, to the city line. And you're saying to us...
No, you don't build it for the house. The house responsibility is yours. Like, you just did your remodeling, right? From your, from your...
It was my responsibility to pay for that.
To that sidewalk.
To the line.
Is yours.
To the sewer line, yeah. That was, that was my responsibility.
Is supposed to be the city's responsibility. So they should be doing the very same thing you had to do when you renovated your home. But we're saying, if that is not a capability on the left side, then you need to go on the left side and follow this diagram to our infrastructure. This is ours. This is the middle of the crown of the road in front of your house. We're going to dig up that street, and we're going to have someone touching our infrastructure. That's what I'm trying to bring light to, not the piece that goes from your house to the sidewalk.
So you're good with the homeowner paying for what goes from the house to the...
Absolutely.
To the line.
Unequitably.
Okay, so that's good. So what are we asking for today, then?
So I think, Mayor, we're just showing what our current practice is.
Yeah.
That we have assurances in place for connections. We have licensed individuals of permitting process and insurances in place for that connection to happen. If there's any different direction, we'd have to certainly update staff, budget, and obviously operations.
When we got here, when this first arose back past commission and this commission, it came down to, it's a city commission decision to change our ordinance. If we change the ordinance, it just puts the responsibility from the sidewalk to our own infrastructure on the city. Nothing changes on the right side because no matter what happened, and before the change, it was still the homeowner's responsibility to go from their toilets to that sidewalk. They're still going to pay for that, no matter what happens.
To the sidewalk.
To the sidewalk.
Which is the property line.
Property line. You just did this at your home.
Right. I did it when I moved, right.
So you want it, but you probably had to pay if there was not a connection on the other side of that sidewalk. You probably had to pay more money to provide or repair. We had one recently, Anthony, that I called you on, and we had a question about, first they told us that we could line it. We could line it.
Right.
Then the engineer said, you know what? You're not going to line it. I want you to replace it. So that changed the whole cost structure, but again, on the city's side. That's why in the presentation, he was saying, if they don't find that lateral at six feet, and it goes down to 12 feet and sometimes a little deeper if we don't know where it is, it becomes a big cost factor. If the city can't find it, what makes you think, you know, the residential contractor can find it or a plumber? We're not, this is the engineering system.
So what's on the table today?
Change the ordinance, but they're...
So, I mean, to sum it up, here's the way I look at it. And, you know, we have an ordinance that is clear, detailed as to where your responsibilities are, and it has step-by-step process.
All right. So, but let me just, so from the house to the property line is the homeowner's responsibility. The question is, do we want the homeowner to also have the responsibility from the property line to the sewer line?
They have both now. They have both now. We're saying just separate the two. From your sidewalk to the street, to the crown of the road, to the middle of the street, should be the city's responsibility. But right now, that's the homeowner's responsibility, based on the orders that we change and when we had folks come online.
Mayor, what would happen if, first of all, I wanted to just get some clarity here. Is staff, what is staff's recommendation here? Status quo? Keep it the way it is since 2014?
My staff recommendation is to stay with the current practice.
Which has been in place since 2014?
Yeah, we have an ordinance that work, process at DSD that works, and we are in consensus with all the municipalities around us. So recommendation is to stay.
And I agree with that, Mayor. First of all, if you did change this, and if you change the responsibility, what would happen to the folks in the last eight years that have paid a certain amount of money, and then all of a sudden, you're changing that? And then what do all those people say from the last eight years?
Like me?
Yeah. What do you say?
Well, I mean, this is just a topic of discussion.
Right.
We're just discussing it right now.
No, I don't think it makes sense to change the ordinance. Staff doesn't think it makes sense to change ordinance. I think there are enough safeguards. Aren't there enough safeguards to make sure that just anyone is not going to be working on either side without inspections, permits, follow-up? I mean, just making sure that we know what's happening. And I don't think it's going to be, let me put it this way. Have you had any incidents in the last eight years where you felt there was something that was compromising the integrity of the system or the infrastructure?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
No. And how many of these year do we actually find ourselves involved in? Any idea how many of these projects a year, these laterals? How many times is this happening roughly a year?
We have, we have a slide that shows the installation. This is the data that we get from our colleague at DSD in terms of these installations.
Look at the numbers.
Are these actual numbers?
That's it.
10 and 8?
That's it. That's why we have to maintain the status quo, and the ordinance should stay the same. Look at, well, look what we're talking about. Thank you.
Abby, thank you.
And again.
This is good. Couple of questions. Yeah, okay. So I'm on the water, the county water advisory board, and you're right.
Yeah, you are on the media.
Yeah, big topic. And you all, I'm sure you all know this, is that we want to convert everyone from septic to sewer, right? Environmentally, maintenance, all for a host of reasons. So it's in the city's best interest, it's in the environment's best interest, it's in the aquifer's best interest. Okay. So now, how can we do that? So Abby, one of the questions that I've had that we've been grappling with on the advisory board is, you know, correct me if I don't do a good job explaining this, which is basically the county would like us to better share information around where are there still septic uses and... are there still septic uses and versus which properties have converted? And so they're wanting to get that data to be more efficient in understanding kind of where existing septic. Is that your understanding of what they're trying to get for data?
Yes, Commissioner. And we have provided that data to the water advisory board. The, the problem that exists across the municipalities in Broward County is that there is the, the septic tank business was controlled by the Department of Health in Broward County. Permits, all of that was controlled through them. So their database, and, and their database is not all that perfect, shall we say.
Right, yeah.
So now, although, a, and, and if, if, you know, somebody pulled a permit, he may or may not connect and so forth. So there is a disconnect in the Department of Health Broward, uh, database, what the municipalities are providing in term of a database, and the county, what the county has in term of a database. So they are asking for assistance in terms to narrow it down.
Right.
In the city, as a result of the 2011 waterworks, we had a number of addresses that we sent letter to in terms of you must convert type of thing. And in a similar thing, we have maps and atlases of area that we know that there is no sewer infrastructure. So areas with no sewer mean definitely, uh, most likely they are on septic.
Okay. What's the, do we know-
So those are the data that we have to wrestle with. But, but again, a lot of time, even if you send in a letter, the residents choose not to convert-
Right.
Because of the cost and reoccurring annual, monthly fees and consumption fees and all of that. Somebody with a septic tank that is functioning, they say, okay, um, I'm supposed to connect. They send me a letter to connect. This is across the, the county. I'm not going to connect. I'm still going to pay the sewer availability fee by having an available sewer on the street, but I'm not going to connect.
Okay. What, so we're providing better, cleaner data to Dr. Gerardo and the county, right?
Dr. Mount and all of this.
Because they expressed a concern that we, for some reason, weren't getting them everything they needed, or, but it sounds like you're-
No, we, we have been on top of it. We've been talking to her staff and we-
Perfect.
Providing all the information. It just, there's a disconnect between Broward County data, Department of Health data, and what the municipalities are providing.
Makes sense.
Trying to mesh it all in a single accurate database is the challenge.
Got you. Okay. What's the tot, do you have an estimate of what the total number of septic, uh, tanks in the city currently being in use?
I don't have that information off the cuff. We're doing this analysis as we speak.
Okay. I mean, do we think it's like hundreds or thousands or just-
Uh, they'll have to go back to the number of letters that were issued-
Okay.
And look at the maps to kind of get an assumption, but certainly it's not in the thousand, and I wouldn't say it's in the high hundreds or whatever. We have, we have a limited number. The city did that 2000, uh, waterworks program from 2000 to 2011. We converted a lot of folks from septic to sewer, but there is still pocket. We know there's a pockets right off Riverland-
Right, on Riverland, there's a bunch.
We know that. There's a little pocket south of the river here.
Yep.
Uh, and we have a little bit of pocket up north. There might be individual houses who were supposed to connect, who have not connected, like the Commissioner has mentioned, but we don't know-
Yep.
Who they are, what they are.
Okay.
Because, again, they may have connected, they may have not connected.
Right.
Again, there is a discrepancy in the database.
Okay. And then if you would just go back a couple of slides, I just want to clarify on the, the, um, with the, yeah, so this one, so, okay, is, is this slide reflecting the current ordinance?
No. This is, this reflects current maintenance.
Maintenance, okay.
I mean, again, we show that to show what we currently maintain. If a clog happened on the, uh, street side, right-of-way side, we go at it. Make sure that is clear. If, uh, if a, if a clog happened on the property side-
Got it.
That is through their private-
So I think what can be confusing, at least to some, is this is the maintenance responsibility, and if you go to the next, uh, or the, the other, this is installation responsibility, right? Which are different and, and tack at different points. Okay. Um, great. Then I guess the la, only last question I've had, Mayor, is, and I, I don't know if this is available, or any program like this is available, but I'm just thinking of people that want to connect to the sewer line that have a fina, financial hardship. Is there any city financial support or, for that? Abby, is there, do you know of anything for that?
I, I, go ahead.
There may be from HCD, uh, funding for improvements for individuals that qualify for certain federal programs.
I'd be interested in that, just for financial hardship. I don't know, you know, um, the folks who would like to connect.
We could find out more on that.
Okay. Sure. Thanks. Thank, Commissioner. Go, go ahead.
When you say maybe, um, have you had any instances where you've seen a pot of money that came from the federal government and said it's going to be for that person that can't afford that lateral? And I think the five or six that you may discover were, when we, they, they brought the attention to our, to the commission, they were CRA lots that were put out, uh, for bid, and then the CRA ended up picking up that cost so that we can keep that house or those housing units affordable, and we all agreed to do that. Um, what I want to leave here with today, and as I disclosed before I started speaking to this issue that came up on the agenda, I never expected to win the outcome of this debate. I only wanted to speak to record, because as I leave here in November to go across the street to the county, um, I leave the city of Fort Lauderdale's infrastructure in the hands of the three newly elected and the, um, remaining from this commission. It is just a word of caution. It is just, um, my institutional knowledge. It is my profession, um, that I'm cautioning the city on where we go. How we vote is just a democracy. The outcome I will always respect. So I've done what I needed to do today, and I thank you, um, for giving me the information that I already knew, and I've enjoyed the relationship we've had, uh, since I've been here. Thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate the feedback.
Okay. So is there any interest in changing the city policy at this point? Vice Mayor?
No, I think we're in good shape.
Okay.
Where we are. With the caveat of I'd love to have the hardship, uh, possibilities.
Okay.
So, so let me understand what you're saying. You, you want them to implement a hardship program? I like that idea, too.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. If you meet certain criteria that-
But the only problem with HCD, it is a mostly grant-funded, um, department, so if we can't get the grants, then the people that you are sending this ray of hope to-
Yep.
Would not get it unless the, the federal government or county or someone has a grant that we can apply for-
Got you.
To give this relief. I never asked for relief for, 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 for the hardship. I'm just talking about, you know, A and B-
Right.
And how it should be-
Right.
In my perspective.
Yep.
And I wasn't looking for hardship, but that's a great recommendation, but we have to have a pot of money each year reoccurring.
And completely agree. And, and that might even be gen, now, might, we might support that through the general fund. I mean, we're not looking at a huge number. Greg, I don't know.
Yeah, certainly. So we do have CDBG funding available on an annual basis. We use, um, them, the federal government, with their formulas and, and their qualifiers to, uh, vet the participants and, and the application process. And this does qualify for that home improvement, if, should they want to connect to, um, the sewer lateral.
Greg, I have a question. Um, if we can go back to that slide, with how many people have done this in the last eight years of this ordinance? Thank you. Um, so of these numbers, are we talking about people that have already been owners in existing single-family homes? Are we talking about developers who are going to be building or are building new single-family homes? We talking about multifamily? What exactly are we, who actually is doing this work? Because that, to me, would impact if we're going to do a hardship case. I mean, if a developer is going to come and build a home, I'm not so sure how that developer would qualify for a hardship case.
Oh, that's not a hardship. Yeah. Yeah.
That's why I want, I want to know who actually is comprising these numbers of people that we see on our screen.
Commissioner, this data came in from the building department. We have a spreadsheet, uh, addresses of all of these installation. Uh, Chris Cooper and our folks at DSD, we could provide that spreadsheet.
I really do believe that if it's a, if it's a, an existing homeowner who has a hardship, that's one thing.
Yep.
If it's a developer who's just going to start developing and building, and I'm not so sure that that would be a hardship.
Correct.
So I, I just think that we have to look at this really carefully and make sure that we're not just granting, uh, dollars to folks that are really not experiencing that hardship or, there's just a difference here, and I, that's why I want to know, being that these numbers are so low, um, I was just wondering, um, how they play out. Thanks.
And, and, and to that point, too, Commissioner, is if there is some support for those experiencing a true financial hardship, maybe these numbers go up a little bit, which is good for everyone.
Right.
Exactly.
Yep. Thank you.
And again, when it came to us, uh, through the CRA about the, the scattered lots that we were doing, um, and the additional costs that it brought to the table after we had already bid it out to the contractors who bid it on, uh, these affordable homes, they brought it to our attention, and that's how we started talking about this with this commission. And then we did the right thing, and we, we went back and we, we, uh, we took on responsibility of these lots in the CRA, but we had a pot of money, uh, that we could go back and, 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 and visit to absorb the cost. And to Commissioner, Vice Mayor's, uh, point, um, the affordability piece of it came from, not me, it came from, uh, Mr. Sorensen, but in that particular case, that would be like a, um, um, these, again, these lots that we own, that we either, uh, bid out or sell to someone. This, this is the only time you'll ever see that opportunity rear its head, uh, just for point of clarification. Because no one's just going to go around and say, I want to build a house and I can't afford it. So I, I agree with that piece. I just still think that when we, when we, when we look at this, uh, when we made folks come online many years ago, we provided a lateral. Then in, somewhere down the line, we changed our ordinance, and we started saying, this is costing us too much, so let's pass this cost on to others. So folks before that had an opportunity just to come online, before we changed the ordinance, to, to, uh, capitalize on the, uh, the revenue that it, that it brought to the table. So when you ask staff, uh, what do you think? Staff is going to say, you know, they're looking at the budget, they're looking at, you know, um, you know, how do we keep, keep the doors open? And they're going to say that this is, this, this is a good thing, and I'm not taking a hit at staff. You have a bottom line there right now. If it's erased, it's a big number. It's a big number. So I respect that, but just to get clarity to the issue, uh, there's a lot more here, and I would love to see us, uh, look further into it. I won't be here to do that. I just caution you that the infrastructure, um, and its integrity could be compromised when you go to the left side of the sidewalk. Whether you're on the first diagram or the second diagram, the sidewalk is the sidewalk. Left is the left and right is the right. And again, thank you. If you care to move on with this, that's up to the folks that remain behind. I'm going across the street.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Business three, update on Fort Lauderdale Police Headquarters Project. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, and Vice Mayor. Staff would like to provide information on the Police Department Headquarters Project. Uh, this project, just want to remind everyone, initiated five years ago, and I'm counting the time from when that item was proposed for referendum, uh, to award time, to design time, to now estimating and permitting, uh, phase. So staff's going to present the latest update and paths that may be pursued to bring this project to fruition. And with that, we have Assistant City Manager Fajardo to start.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioner, Anthony Fajardo. Good afternoon. Uh, so just to give you a little background, also, we have Susan Grant here. She's going to talk about some of the information regarding, uh, funding options. And I have Lieutenant Solomon here, who's been neck-deep in this project for a while now, so he can help address any details if you have questions that I can't answer. So as you're aware, we passed a bond initiative, $100 million to build a police station, 1,300 West Broward, uh, 191 square feet, uh, three stories, 48 feet tall, and with a 222,000 square foot garage. The, uh, guaranteed maximum price quote that we received from Moss was $142,000. Broken debt, $142 million. Right. I wish it was $142,000. Um, the, those costs are broken down between hard and soft costs. Hard costs are typically associated with the construction of the building. So all your equipment, the people that do the work, um, steel, rebar, concrete, that type of thing. And soft costs, which are some of the more intangible things and some of the other things that come afterwards, such as, uh, furniture and design, that type of thing. So the hard cost for it is $119 million, roughly, and the soft costs are $23 million. Uh, we have initiated, as of today, an audit on that cost quote, uh, the GMP quote that we received from Moss. We've engaged an audit firm that was part of the 2021 agreement, uh, for this contract that will look at everything, soup to nuts, with both of those, with both of those, uh, hard and soft costs, and give us, uh, feedback on whether or not that is something that is in line with what we're seeing elsewhere. I mean, as you know, we've got projects all over the city. There's projects all over the county. The federal government's having the same issues, just costs are escalating. So we don't anticipate that we would see a big change in the number, but we think it's important to validate it. That process will take 42 days from initiation, roughly. So we don't think that it's going to run into an issue with any of our timelines, because the project is still in permitting and going through review. And it will cost approximately $7,700, so we think it's well worth the money.
So, so we kind of knew that it was going to cost more money. Now, where are we going to get it from?
Yes. Susan can help you with that.
Leave it to the lady to come up with the solutions.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner Susan Grant, Finance Director and Assistant City Manager. Um, so, yeah, a couple of options as far as where to get $42 million. Um, the, the obvious answer is we would have to borrow it. Um, and in that realm, there are two options. We could issue some special obligation bonds. Those are basically when we have a covenant to budget and appropriate, we pledge some revenue, and certainly we have capacity, um, to pledge revenue. Um, for this, I would recommend, um, either a 30-year bond or 27. 27 would coincide with the maturity of the bonds that we issued in February of 2020. Um, estimate as far as what that would cost, and we wouldn't borrow this money until 2024 likely, because, again, we have the $100 million in the bank right now. Um, so we would fund this later. Um, but on a 30-year bond, it would be about $2.7 million a year. 27-year bond, 2.9. I ran those at 5%. Obviously, it's all a function of what's happening in the market, um, but I, I think those are pretty conservative numbers. Again, we would just have to make sure we had budget capacity in fiscal 2024. A second option, and while not ideal, um, if we wanted to, we could pursue a GO bond, um, for that difference. for that difference. That would require a referendum.
Wait, wait, what was the second option?
Do a GEO bond, a general obligation bond, as we did with the public safety building in the first place.
So in both cases, borrowing the money?
In both cases, borrowing the money. The GEO bond would have typically a lower interest rate, and that's a separate line item on a tax bill. Again, it would require a referendum, there's a cost associated with a special election, and again, there are no guarantees on a positive outcome on that. But again, that would be an option as well. One thing to think about, that there may be, once construction of the police building is completed, there is or will probably be some vacant property, and there may be some opportunity to monetize that, to pay down some of this debt. So with that in mind, whatever type of debt we issue, we'd probably put in a provision that we could maybe prepay some if we had the opportunity to with some cash from the sale of some property.
So are you coming to us with a recommendation today, or just to tell us, give us an update of where your thoughts are?
I think it's more of a heads up.
All right, so, so that third thing that you said, you kind of just made it as a footnote, but the reality is, we've got, what, six acres of land?
Almost nine acres.
Almost nine acres.
On the west of this new building.
On Broward Boulevard, that we could perhaps sell, and, you know, mixed use, maybe mixed demographic, you know, some affordable housing, some market rate, retail, that would certainly close that gap. I mean, in fact, it probably-
Correct, and again, we would put a provision in the debt that we could prepay what our estimate is on that, so to bring down the, the cost of that long term.
Well, I think that the nine acres would certainly reap more than $42 million, especially on Broward Boulevard. And also, we learned something yesterday, that transit-oriented development within a mile of transportation hub, i.e. Brightline, might be, there are dollars that can be secured through the new infrastructure bill that would permit us to apply for a loan slash grant to pay for something like this, as long as it's within a mile. And I do believe the police station's within a mile.
And when you mentioned that, if we felt that we did have a good shot at selling the property, I mean, another option would be like a short-term line of credit-
Right.
-for that $42 million that we could pay down at any time. But again, we would just have to, as it got closer to us needing the money, decide how we were going to do that.
Okay.
So Mayor and Commissioners and Vice Mayor as well, just wanted to tell you that we, we do anticipate that this is much greater than estimated, but also keep in mind perspective that this is five years, this is the estimate, five years since this project started. But there are plans, and as you know, there's federal loans, there are low-interest loans, very flexible loans. This is 1.07 miles from the Brightline Station, so definitely transit-oriented development may be a consideration for this or other nearby development.
That's what you said, right?
I'm sorry?
That's what you just said, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So let me ask you a question. The parcels or the acreage that you mentioned could be for sale, what's the permitted use in height for those areas? Because that's going to determine-
I think it's RM 25. What is it?
No, it was actually rezoned, and it's a CF, Community Facility zoning, so we would have to rezone it, but you still could, because the underlying land use is compatible with that.
So what's the highest height at its current usage?
CF? I'd have to look it up.
Let me, because you say it's on Broward, I'm not trying to take anything from the real estate guru, Mayor, but I'm just trying to look at, if we were doing a deal, we're purchasing the land, we're going to want the maximum height to justify our investment in buying at our highest bid on this, and so that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, just at some point, we can get back with that answer.
Well, and as an example of the surrounding areas, those are all business districts, the height is up to 150 feet, so I would anticipate that-
They were all business, but they're like little, like, you know-
They're smaller parcels, but I'm saying is the zoning itself-
The tallest height you have back there are the apartments behind the police station, which are maybe two or three, a resident that I think will, will really speak out about, about height, you know, things of that nature. I'm just trying to make sure if we choose this route, we can do it and make sure, because the most important thing right now to me would be getting this station completed, the best way we can. And I know, and I brought it up to the City Manager in these conversations, that they were talking about relocating the tower, and you gave me the new location. I pushed back on that location, because the residents in the northwest are not looking for a tower in their neighborhood as part of turning the neighborhood around and economics. So we need to be looking at options when it comes to relocating that tower. I have no, no problem with settling the land, but I have a problem with putting the tower in our neighborhood. That is not an economic engine, that is not something that we want, and environmentally, we look at that like you look at everything else, the sewer and what have you. People just don't know, you know, what's out there now with these, these waves and these sounds that come in and out of these transmissions, so it is an issue. But I think if we have to do this for our police department, we sell it, but let's find out what the, what the highest and best use we can get out of that, even if we future rezone it. But that investor's going to want to know that day one, Mayor, what can they possibly get out of it, right?
So how tall is that radio tower?
300.
300.
The current one, I think, is about 300 feet.
350 feet.
The proposed tower is definitely 350, I'm assuming the existing tower is-
I think that would be too high. So somewhere in between. If we, no, if we build housing, it'd have to be somewhere between the height of the tower and where we, what we have there.
Well, it's not us, unless we take on the project ourselves, then we can control the outcome.
We can change the zoning.
Yeah, we can change the zoning, but if an investor buys it, they're going to want to go as high as they can.
Well, I agree with you. I mean, clearly, we want to be respectful as a neighborhood.
To get the maximum purchase price that we want to recap this $42 million gap that we're trying to fill.
Forty-two million, well, that's just a number. I think we can probably bring that number down significantly.
Oh, we will be working on that.
Yeah, we're working on that. But let's say it's 30 million, Mr. Moss, you know, nine into 30 is a lot easier, it's like three and a half million per acre, which I think is a lot, is very cheap, and I think we can get a lot more than three and a half million per acre there.
Then my question, one more question, just to understand this. Where are we in terms of breaking ground? Where is the project? What's the-
I don't know.
So right now, we're doing-
Get the golden shovels out.
We're doing a 42-day audit on the cost. It's a very, very extensive part of bringing the cost down, is to vet what has been given to us as an estimate. Once that takes place, we should be also arriving to the final permitting stages, so we're looking at somewhere around maybe December, January to break ground.
This December?
Yes.
If, I may, Mayor-
You'll be invited.
We have a, no, I don't, I'll come anyway to stand in the audience, but we have a liaison from the police department that's been working on the project. Is there anything you want to add to this conversation to help me continue to support your efforts?
Oh, first of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commission. I appreciate everybody's unwavering support on the project. I would just say, you know, to put your guys at ease a little bit with regards to the cost, we've gone through extensive value engineering exercises to cost it out, to do what we can to try to get it within cost, but I know, Mr. Mayor, we mentioned before, like the last value engineering exercise, we thought we were taking 12 million off, and it wound up, by the time it was done, it wound up being exceedingly more. So we've been running into these challenges just throughout. Also, right now, the city attorney's office is reviewing the, you know, the GMP contract, because there's, you know, language in there that, you know, the, the city potentially would be opposed to, or, I mean, that's why we have them very early on looking at the contract. So I would say that we have a lot of working, a lot of, a lot of wheels in motion, but any, any questions you have, I'm here for you.
No, that's the question I had, so I mean, maybe the others have questions, I just wanted to make sure I had all the information to move forward, and I may or may not be here, but my, my blessing and spirit is here. I started with you, and I'll definitely be there, Mayor, with a golden shovel.
Yeah. Okay.
I think we just, yeah, I think we just keep driving forward and-
Yeah, yeah.
Look at, you know, funding options to close the gap, and it shows that, you know, the more quickly we move, the increased, you know, possibility of keeping things cost down, so, great.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just keep us apprised as you make, as you make progress. I notice is, there's some gentlemen out there in red shirts, very nicely tailored, and are you here on a particular item? Should I bring that up now, or you're just here to observe the-
CRA R2.
I can't hear that.
Come to the microphone, Mr. Bethel.
Which project are they on?
CRA R2.
I think CRA or something, I can believe.
Oh, CRA? Oh, okay. We're getting there. Okay.
CRA, correct?
R2.
Okay, we're getting there. But you're enjoying the show, are you?
Back to the shirt, son.
Okay. Business four, update on the subsurface tunnel system from downtown Fort Lauderdale to Fort Lauderdale Beach, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners, as directed by the City Commission, staff is working with the Boring Company to determine feasibility, alignment, and cost estimates to build a subsurface tunnel system for mobility. Staff will now present updates of the efforts performed to date and what the next steps are.
Great.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commission, Ben Rogers, Director of Transportation Mobility. As the City Manager alluded, a quick update on the Tesla Tunnel, as some people are calling it, and a couple of objectives for today. The first one is just a quick project update. As you remember, this project is not just this one link, but it's really a vision to have a complete transportation network that goes all the way from Drive Pink Stadium down to the airport, with the initial connection of being between downtown and the Barrier Island. As we work through the analysis in this project, today, I'm really going to be seeking a couple of points of feedback, so that way we can take it to the next step. We don't want to spend money and work on things if the commission isn't supportive or aligned with what staff is recommending. So we're going to be looking at the preferred route, potential stop locations, and then the station types. And then the last thing we'll talk about is the timelines on what the interim agreement looks like, and then the subsequent comprehensive agreement if we get to that phase. So if you recall, back in June, we, you approved an interim agreement that was not to exceed $335,000, and it had four milestone efforts. The alternatives analysis, which is evaluating various termini and routes to determine the preferred option, that's pretty much what we're going to be talking about today. The geotechnical report, which will be conducting boring samples, testings, lab analysis of conditioned soils along the route to see how the engineering standards would need to be put forth. The plans and station design, which prepares engineered drawings and architecture representations of the project, conducting surveys of existing utilities and conflicting structure. And then the last one is the cost estimate and design build schedule, which is going to have the project features, the operational considerations, and the overall cost projection. So when we started, we looked at six different endpoints, six different terminis that would create 12 different route options. We narrowed it down to one preferred route that we're going to talk about today. The criteria that we used was the proximity key activity centers, mobility connections, available space for stations, and access to land, and those who control it, and as well as the compatibility of high-level engineering constraints. So over the last 90 days, we've really been focusing on what, what is possible and what does the existing conditions look like. So the Boring Company has reviewed as-built drawings for existing structures, generated depth profiles, initiated engineering considerations, reviewed property records, and focused on potential conflict points like the intercoastal waterway and the Henry E. Kenny Tunnel. Based off that review, we created the preferred route and station locations, and this true testing period really is going to allow us to expedite the next steps. So when we get to the timeline, you'll see today's a key point in giving us that direction, and once we get that overall direction, we can start moving through the other deliverables of the interim agreement. So the preferred alternative, looks like a rather simple line on a, on a map, but there was a lot of work done to get to this point. And at the west termini, it is placed at Esplanade Park. Stop two is somewhere around the Riverwalk Center Garage. Stop three is on La Solas, somewhere between Eighth and Tenth, and then the east termini would be the Intercoastal Park. I'm going to talk about these a little more in depth on the next page, but I didn't know if there's any, any feedback you want to provide at this time on not enough stops, too many stops, or concerns of the stops.
Just on stop two, you have it at the garage. What happens if that garage is not permanent? What happens if that's taken down? Do we really, I mean, there is some talk about that, to redevelop that site.
Yeah, and that's one of the considerations we'll have to get. We looked a lot of areas in this, in this specific geographic kind of central space, other than Heisinga Park, which is, you know, going through its own project right now. There's not a whole lot of available resources, and so that's why we looked at the, at the garage. We'll talk about the station types in a few minutes. If we would do a subsurface, it might make redevelopment opportunity available, however, it might constrain the ability of what you could design in that parcel because of the underground infrastructure that would be needed.
Okay.
Any other feedback on the, the preferred route?
Looks good.
So station options, this is really important on understanding the utilization of real estate versus the cost of the project. And so as we look to design this, I'm going to talk about each potential stop and what we're looking at now, again, for feedback from the commission, because the subsurface station looks awesome, looks modern, looks fancy, allows you to utilize the surface for other use, but it costs about five to 10 times more than what a surface station costs. So this will have a major impact on the economics of the project, and then also what the, at surface level looks and feels like for the general public. So if I start with the Esplanade Park, we're reviewing both types of stops at this point, a surface and a subsurface. We believe that if we make some modifications in the park, we can shift some things around and have a surface station that would fit on the park, but we would also have to do some park improvements in relocating or rebuilding some of the current infrastructure, like the restroom building, the pavilions that are out there now. We do believe that a subsurface station would be feasible at this location. So at this location, either/or is currently being reviewed, didn't know if the commission has any feedback on Esplanade Park.
So Ben, the idea would be, so Esplanade Park would be the starting point, so people would possibly drive and park in the parking lot there at, next to the Broward Center?
Correct.
Which is a city garage, right? I think we lease or-
Yeah, it's a tri-party agreement with the city, the DDA, and the Performing Arts Center.
Okay, so park there, and then you'd walk to get into the, to the terminal, okay. Now, we had talked, or at least I remember, some of the conversation was around possibly having the first station being near the bus terminal and so forth, or Brightline Station. Tell me a little bit about that.
Yeah, so that, I think it's still available, and that's why we want to come back. When we looked at some of the easements that you would need to go under private property, some of the limitations of where the stations would go, it swayed the conversation from Brightline down to Esplanade, and a lot of our recommendations are based off of the city right-of-way and optimizing public space and really mitigating the challenges of private property.
Yep, okay, all right.
I mean, it would be better if we could, the terminus could be at the Brightline area, but as Ben said, it became very complicated trying to negotiate that with them.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a, it's a good transportation hub there.
At some point, especially if we end up with a train tunnel-
Right.
-and we bring the Brightline Station below grade, you know, that could be a possibility. I mean, think of it this way, I mean, we're just starting this, this whole, this whole system, and this is just the first leg, and we'll, we'll, we'll be able, in time, to hopefully be able to add to it and modify it as, as we, you know, learn, learn from people's, the, the usage of it and the patterns of, of the traffic. I think that Brightline ultimately will realize that they probably wanted the terminus to be near them, but I think a lot of that area is still in flux, especially since, you know, the state has now put their building up for sale, you know, that anything and everything can be going on there. So to get things started, I think the recommendation is, let's just get it started from the Esplanade Park, and we will begin it from there.
Okay, yep.
And Mayor, do you have any preference on at-grade versus under-grade at Esplanade?
Well, I think that's, I think it makes sense to do it at-grade as opposed to below grade. If at some point we decide to, you know, build a station underground, that's always an option.
Okay, thank you. Stop two, the Riverwalk Center Garage, this is probably one of the more challenging ones because of the existing developments in the area. What we're looking at right now is, what we're focusing on is a surface station that would kind of branch off of La Solas, come up First Street and Second Street, and then connect into the garage, and it would be a surface station. It would also allow the Boring Company to have their back-of-house operation, so their maintenance facility and some of their operational needs on the first floor of the garage kind of restricted, but in direct proximity to the tunnel. One of the challenges that we'll have with that is where the tunnels actually break through the ground and come up to grade, and we might have to do some roadway modifications, maybe modifying a two-way street to a one-way street. We might have to vacate the road that goes through the garage right now, or some modification to it, so instead of having four lanes go through the garage, maybe it's only two lanes that go through the garage, but we're really working through those considerations right now.
And Ben, maybe a basic question, or maybe this is part of the operating agreement, who pays for this? Who pays for the construction of stations and so forth?
Yeah, so we're still working through that, and part of this interim agreement, the fourth deliverables for them to provide all the cost estimates, and that's why I was trying to get initial feedback from the commission on if you wanted all subsurface stations or if you wanted all at-grade, because that's going to heavily move the needle on the total project cost. But until we get that cost estimate, we're not really negotiating or talking through the responsibilities of, of the finances.
Who's paying for what?
Commissioner, I mean Vice Mayor.
Yeah.
Sorry, wanted to add, but again, we, we just got off of a airplane last night, and we haven't even shared some of these details with staff, but there are some very good programs that are seeking proposals that target innovation, target mobility, equity, and this is certainly qualified for one of those.
So for federal funding grant opportunities, is that what you're suggesting?
Very low-interest loans that are, can be paid back in 75 years.
Okay, okay.
So that, that, that would require, I mean, for, for a capital like this size would require minimal annual annuities to be paid back.
Yep, okay. Good to know, excellent. And Ben, if you can remind us of the, the, of a at-grade station, the surface, the square foot surface impact? Because what I'm thinking, Ben, is I'm just, as we think about Esplanade Park, we want to be able to, as we think about this, think about the impact of what, what that would take away from the park or the impact.
Yeah, so that's one of the balancing acts we're doing right now, is depending on how many cars and what the max uses we want, so what the capacity of it is, depends on- So what the capacity of it is depends on how many stops, how many bays we have to put in each stop. So we're calculating that right now. We're working through all of the different, you know, conditions to determine, some stops might need four bays, and other stops might need 10 bays based on the demand and where they're at along the route. So I don't have a specific answer to that. I do think that once we get the feedback today, we'll be continuing to advance the project with the boring company, and we'll probably, actually, probably, we will be designing what the potential stops would look like. And then we'll probably schedule meetings one-on-one with each elected official to go through that and get specific feedback.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
So if I keep going, stop three is central La Solas. There's really two locations that we're looking for this one. The primary one would be the current city-owned Heron Lot, which is on Second and Eighth, just a block off of La Solas. This is also a parcel that we're working on, unsolicited P3, to develop a garage, an EMS station, and retail. So right now, we're working with that developer to find out if there's a way we can overlap both projects in that parcel, so that way there's public parking available, it's proximate to La Solas, and if we can make all those things work, that's, I think, our primary location to put that stop. It would probably be a subsurface stop, so that way it doesn't impact the developer, the P3 deal, but we still have to work that out, and there's a lot of complexities to that. An alternative to that would be the city's nautical lot, which is kind of behind Louis Bossi on Fourth and Tenth. There's this city surface parking lot back there that could fit, but one of the challenges is, is getting the tunnel to that and staying on right-of-way. So it would be long tunnels to get there, and not sure if the cost benefit of running those long tunnels underneath the right-of-way would justify having a small stop in that location. So still working it out, but wanted to make the commission aware of the two locations that we're working on.
Okay. Thanks.
And then the last one is out at the Intercoastal Park, not the Oceanside Park, but the Intercoastal Park, the grass lot just south of the bridge. And the concept there that we're looking at is a surface station that would be tucked between the garage and the bridge, but the tunnels would come up in the grass field and then go underneath the bridge, so the stop would actually be north of the bridge, and the tunnels would be south of the bridge. So those are the four stops that we're looking at.
And we would have, like, circuit or some kind of vehicle to take people from there to places on the beach, right?
Correct, and that was the benefit of hitting the garage, is that's where the circuit goes, that's also where the tram was going, and Lauder could go there as well. So kind of using the garage as a holder for vehicles and then a multimodal connection point. So that's it on the station options. So we're looking at really three above-grade and probably one subsurface. But again, we'll design that and then bring it back for one-on-one meetings with each of the elected officials.
So where are we on the feasibility of tunneling?
Great question, and that's what this slide here is. It's focused on the next steps. As you can see, today is the decision point or kind of the initial feedback, and if there's no concerns on the preferred route, that will allow us to start triggering some of the other deliverables in interim agreement. We didn't want to go out and start doing boring samples on a route that wasn't supported by the commission. So if there's a general support by the commission, when I get back with the boring company next week, we'll start kicking off the next two or three tasks. The geotechnical task would start sometime in November and have everything back in January. The plan and station design is already underway, but 15% designs would be sometime in December, 30% designs in February. And once that 30% comes back, that will give them enough information to start working on their cost estimates. And so a month later, we should have the cost estimates back. So the interim agreement deliverables should be done sometime March, April of next year, and then that will can define what the next steps look like for the comprehensive agreement.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Oh, hello, Commissioner.
Hello. Have we talked about the financial plan yet, or that will be in the comprehensive agreement, I'm sure, but, or will it?
I don't think we got there yet.
Okay, so that'll be in April when we get to the final.
Because we had asked that, and they're not there yet. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Business four, oh, wait, wait, John Roth, you wanted to speak on this. Business four. Sorry. You've been sitting patiently.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. As you know, I've been, because I live right on La Solas, 100 yards off. I've been following this project intently, and my history has been construction and tunneling and mining and pipelining and things like that, anything that has to do with long-range planning, and especially those that require moving lots of dirt or muck. And so I looked at this from a 50,000-foot range, and I said, what is the objective of this? And so the object, I've heard lots of them, but it boils down to we're going to move X number of people from point A to point B in a certain amount of time on certain days in some kind of a pattern. And that's great. That's more than we've had before, that somebody's figured that all out. Now, and so what are the objectives? You know, what, besides that, you can't put a dollar figure on whether it's pretty or nice or things like that. I need to know other things. So I am not in the boat of it cannot be technically done. It can be technically done. It's, I am in the boat, however, it may cost an awful lot of money, and therefore it's not reasonably financially feasible versus your objectives. We don't know about that yet, but I am experienced enough to identify caution flags early in the project, which is where we are today, and I'm glad Greg brought up the information of, you're at a decision point today. Where's my yellow flag? And that is, the mayor let it loose one day, and I don't know if it was in jest or what, he said, one of the reasons we're picking the tunnel solution is because we're going to get more EMS vehicles, and we can put them in the tunnel. So I looked at, and I said, hmm, EMS machines, they're diesel-run. The ventilation system's designed for electrical equipment, not for diesel. That's going to cost a lot more money. Second of all, how big is an ambulance? And I just pulled off the internet before I came, and AT&amp;T dug my access to my house up, and I couldn't use, get up more information. But anyway, if you look at the ambulance that was sitting across the street when I came in here, in the back end of the ambulance, that profile is much larger than a Tesla car. And so in the next upshot, I did a couple of very quick calculations, and the diameter of the Tesla tunnel, without extra waterproofing, they drill 12 feet in diameter. And that's their standard thing that they're quoting, and they know a lot about that. I think that you would need a tunnel that would go underwater, which is a double-layer ring for waterproofness. That's going to be somewhere between 16 and 17 feet in diameter, which means a whole lot more material has to be removed to drill out that tube. Done, no problem. The one in Miami is 60 feet in diameter or something like that. But you should keep that in mind, is how bad do you really want to use the EMS access as a financial benefit of using a tunnel for that rather than the current 12-foot diameter? So that's my yellow flag, and this is a high-level engineering decision, but I've encountered these kinds of things all the time in places all over the world. I had a customer in South Africa who put a giant generator in the bottom of his parking garage. It's like the one we have over on La Solas. They put it in the bottom, and then they built a garage, and something broke in the generator, and they couldn't get the generator out without cutting a 10-foot square hole through reinforced concrete, through eight levels of parking garage, and taking it out with a crane. That cost a lot of money, and we told them ahead of time about that, and they said, oh, that'll never happen. And so I'm just here to be, use my experience on these kinds of things, and you can use me as a sounding board, but I don't think, you know, there's, it can be technically done. It just costs money, and we have to figure if we want to spend that kind of money for these kinds of features in our tunnel.
All right, well, John, no one is trying to break the bank. That's why we've engaged a feasibility study, and at the same time, we have found that there are numerous opportunities for funding that we were not aware of or were available even within the last year that are now available. So let us keep working on this.
Yeah.
And we appreciate your concern, as we all share the same concerns.
And I worked on this wave streetcar. And at the end, they came and said, well, in order to make this work, we're going to have to fudge the numbers and reduce the quantity of people transported. And we ended up with three cars that would, you know, I think the average was like five person per trip, and that was totally unfeasible. So we really need to look at the quantity of people and then the machine that's needed to get the job done.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to business five, parental leave discussion. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioner. Staff was asked to research and determine options for parental leave. This is a trend that other organizations pursue today, and now we're going to share details on how a parental leave policy may look like and how it can be considered.
So right now, we have 180 hours, which I calculate to be four and a half weeks, and they want to up it to six weeks. Is that correct?
So Acting HR Director Jerome Post will confirm that for you, those numbers, and he's going to share more figures as well.
Thank you.
All right, good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor Jerome Post, Acting Director of Human Resources. This item has come before you a couple times before, so what I'd like to do today is give you a refresher of what we've already done, and we'll give you an update on what we have or what we know newly. Back in August of 2020, we gave you some demographics about what impact or what use actually we have already experienced with the use of FMLA relative to baby bonding. We gave you some demographics relative to gender, number of hours taken, where they came from, largely in general fund and in particular the public safety units. And then in May of 2021, we gave you a little update on some of the legislation that was either being considered or had passed. For example, the Federal Employee Leave Act was passed that provides for six weeks, excuse me, 12 weeks. In Florida, at the state level, both bills that were considering some parental leave time were withdrawn and died in committee. And as you know, the Broward County provides up to 240 hours of six weeks of paid parental leave. We also told you about Miami-Dade, Palm Beach counties that provide some of it, and then we reminded you what the city currently does. We do provide two weeks of vacation time after the first year, which builds up with longevity of employment. We do provide 12 days of sick leave, or 96 hours of sick leave per year, that's one day per month. And then we do have a voluntary short-term disability program that's available for employees to purchase as well. Anybody who's either planning a family or think they might be having a family sometime in the future could purchase a short-term disability. But in the first year of employment, the vacation and sick leave can accrue up to 5.5 weeks or five and a half weeks. Now, the update, I wanted to let you know that we did have a decision package for the budget for the coming year that was requested by the former city manager. Our staff of the Office of Management and Budget put together some numbers to calculate what it would cost to provide six weeks of paid leave for baby bonding, and that estimated cost came to about $1.1 million. That cost includes time for backfill in those areas or departments that would require backfill, i.e. the public safety units, and it came to roughly $600,000 in the leave pay itself, $500,000 in the overtime for the backfill. That decision package was not recommended by the former city manager, and he instructed instead for it to be considered as a total part of the collective bargaining process. I will tell you that in the course of bargaining, the several units have requested the parental leave. We have come to tentative agreements with both our Federation Unit and the Teamsters Unit. Does not include parental leave, but those contracts or TAS have not been ratified by the unions as yet, so it's not unrealistic that we couldn't go back to them if you so directed to do.
They don't allow for the increase in the amount of parental leave, or they don't have any parental leave at all?
We do not have any parental leave at all specifically for parental leave.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure, parental leave or paid parental leave?
Well, paid parental leave is what we're talking about.
Paid parental leave.
They do have parental leave in the form of the Family Medical Leave Act that we comply with with the federal government.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
We also wanted to give you a little update as to what other agencies in the area are providing paid parental leave. You'll see there that Coral Gables, Dorale, Hallandale, Jacksonville, Miami Beach, all provide up to 100%, as does West Palm Beach, up to 100% of pay for at least the first two weeks. Couple of them have descending scales, 75% for two weeks and 50% for two weeks after that as well.
I think Wilton Manners also has paid parental leave.
They did not show up on our survey, so it is possible, yeah, they do. And in Tampa, at the 240 hours, obviously, that's equivalent of six weeks as well, and then 80 hours for the secondary caregiver. So what options are up for discussion? We obviously have the do-nothing option, that's continued with current practice of providing the vacation sick leave and then voluntary short-term disability, which we can make available. Or if you prefer that we go back to the bargaining table, or we introduce into bargaining with the two units that are still open, which include the FOP and the IAFF, we could look at what the cost would be of some paid parental time. We could either do that at 100% of however many weeks, or we could do it on a decreasing scale as a couple of the other units did, and then continue or provide a city-funded short-term disability insurance, and as I understand, probably be the most expensive of the options available to you.
I'm finding this process a little unorthodox. I mean, isn't this part of the collective bargaining methodology? I mean, why are we being asked to comment on, you know, individual components of a labor contract? What brought this today? Shouldn't that just be part of the collective bargaining process?
Well, yes, the process would have to be...
Is every employee part of the collective bargaining process?
I'm sorry.
Is every employee part of the collective bargaining process?
Um, I think so.
No.
Every employee, but most of them are.
Well, that's the reason it would be a citywide policy, because it's, you wouldn't be able to do this just for collective bargaining. What about the employees, the other employees?
But I'm saying that most, I just feel like we're interfering with the collective bargaining process by setting a tone as to a policy that has yet to be negotiated for 90% of our employees.
Well, in other cities, I think it's done not really as a part of collective bargaining, it's done as a city policy.
Well, technically, as compensation, as a benefit, it would be subject to collective bargaining. However, clearly, that is, if you offer it to a unit whose contract is already settled, it's something that they wouldn't argue, I'm sure, but by law, we would have to take it to the unit for approval or ratification. For those units that are not settled yet, we would still have to take it as part of collective bargaining. Now, that is an interesting point the mayor brought up. It is unusual that we would have this in front of you while we have contracts open. It is purely coincidental, really. It was requested that we bring back to you this item for discussion. We just happen to have contracts open for discussion. So if you like, we could postpone this until after the contracts are settled, or we could continue forward looking at what we could offer in the terms of the total cost of a package benefit for the units.
Do the other cities that have this, is it part of the collective bargaining and part of policy as well? I mean, it's got to be both, right, to cover those people who are not...
Well, those cities that have collective bargaining units are required to put them up for a vote with the union. They are required to collectively bargain them. For example, if the employer were to bring forward a benefit level such as 50% for six weeks, and the unit would want to bargain that to say, no, we want 100%, if you're going to offer it, we want 100% for six weeks, they have to be provided that option.
Vice Mayor, I think where you were getting at...
Vice Mayor, I think where you were getting at is for the, the, the limited number of employees we have that are not in bargaining units.
Right.
If we negotiate benefits for those bargaining units, they will get them as well.
Okay.
So there's parity in regards to the benefits.
And is that parity just part of Paul, our general policy?
Right. Cause you're not going to have one employee here because they're in a union have a better benefit than someone else would. So there's parity in that regard. But, uh, but to Jerome's point, you know, anything that we do, even if we're talking about, you know, across the board, we have to go to the unions as well.
Right. And, and then my question would be, so we're bargaining with two unions right now, the ones that we're not. We would have to, to achieve parity, we would have to reengage with them in what, when and what context?
Right. Cause there's two that we just closed out. I mean, they haven't been ratified yet, but we just finished Teamsters and Federation.
Right.
So we'd have to bring them back to the table.
Right.
Before ratification and then we're working with the FOP and IAFF so that, so obviously we want parity between.
Exactly.
The four.
Okay. So you, so if I'm hearing you right, you're saying you, if the commission so desired, you could achieve this through the collective bargaining of those folks and then instituting parity for those not in it?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so in that scenario, what's the cost expectation? Is that the million? Can you just go back to that slide?
The 1.1 million would be for citywide. That's based on historical use over two-year period.
Yep. Per year.
Yes.
It's a very high estimate. We can't predict how many people have or foster children.
Sorry, say that again. It's a high estimate.
We can't predict how many people make use of this benefit. We just can share from experience.
Okay. Okay. And so what you're asking today is what is the will, what's the commission interested in kind of looking at or moving forward? Is that?
I, I don't want to say we're asking. I say we're sharing.
Yep.
Because that's what was requested from us.
Sure.
Um, if there's any additional feedback or direction in how, uh, we can present other options.
Okay.
That certainly is, uh, would be appreciated.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, so this to me is very interesting and worthwhile to consider. Mayor, just wanted, yep.
I have some thoughts too.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, thank you for bringing this back to us. Um, I understand if we have this conversation today, it doesn't mean that they will accept it in terms of the bargaining, uh, that's going on right now. It's just something that we will possibly offer. I, I think if we're going to start anywhere, I personally think it makes sense to start with a decreasing scale. Uh, it's always harder to go backwards. So if we offer a little bit next year, let's see how it goes. And then maybe the fall, you know, the following year we decide to do the hundred percent of six weeks. But I think it would make sense just to do the next step would be to offer the decreasing scale after four weeks.
Well, okay. So, so when we passed the budget, uh, a couple of weeks ago, we, um, passed it based on a certain amount of money that we were going to apply towards compensation packages. So if we change anything now, it's going to take away from other compensation, uh, line items such as, you know, per hour pay, um, you know, and the whole list of things that we, that we pay for, um, when you work for the city. So if we, if, if we think we're actually giving them something, we might be giving them something here, but taking away from something else there.
Well, that's why I said if we offer it, they may not accept it.
Yeah.
So I'm saying if I'm offering anything, I think it would make sense to do a baby step, a graduated step and not do a hundred percent funding at six weeks and take it one step at a time. That's what I'm saying. I would feel comfortable with offering.
I just don't want to tie the hands of our negotiators who are trying to negotiate the best package, um, and say, well, now you're forced to do this, you know, you're
Yeah. I don't think it's being forced upon them. I think if it's the will of the commission, maybe it's something we can offer. But like you said, it's something may have to go if our budget, which it is, is already set.
What do you think? Ms. Grant?
If I may, I'm Susan Grant, Assistant City Manager. Um, I, I think that is part of negotiations. Again, we have two contracts that have been settled, not ratified yet, but settled. Um, as part of the others, I mean, negotiations are a give and take across the whole spectrum of pay and benefits. Um, so if one of the unions had requested it during the, the process, we would cost it out for that unit and it would again be part of a negotiation.
So the two units that you did settle, do they include 80, they include 120 hours of paid parental leave?
No. As, as part of that, they just use their accumulated vacation and sick time and comp time. So there's no paid, city-paid parental leave in either of those contracts.
So have those been voted upon yet?
They have not been ratified yet, but we, um, TA'd on both of those, one this week and one the week before.
So would they be, um, entitled to have those negotiations reopen if this commission decides to change the policy?
Well, no, not entitled. I mean, it, there are no reopeners in either of those contracts for this. I mean, if it was, you know, something that the city decided or gave to the other units as part of negotiation, we might, um, open up the, the agreement with them. I mean, there's a zipper clause that allows us to open up on either end if we want, but there are no reopeners in the contract for this specific subject.
Mayor, also, you know, there are some cities that actually require you to be employed for a certain time, sometimes a minimum of one year. I don't know why we have to necessarily say that this is happening immediately. Um, we could actually, i- if there's consensus that this should be something that we should offer, and I actually believe that we should. By the way, I, I did look it up. Miramar and Wilton Manners in February, both paid parental leave were passed this past February. So that happened in those two cities as well.
Excuse me? 120 hours?
Not sure how many hours, um.
Because we already offer it.
Right.
We already offer it.
Paid parental leave.
At 80 hours. We already have it.
No.
No, we don't. No, we don't.
Wait a minute. That's.
No, we don't.
It says. Okay. So we don't have, I misread the cam. So we have, we don't offer it at all.
No.
Correct.
I see.
Employees use their accumulated sick and vacation time to fund.
And I think we should. I, I just think that it's.
Well, I'm not against it.
Right. I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah.
But we could certainly make it for, if we didn't think that we can maneuver with the collective bargaining, although I do think we can, and I think we can get there this year. Um, to me, it's okay that if worse comes to worse, it's for, uh, fiscal year 2024. But I mean, pregnancy takes nine months. So, I mean, it's not like, you know, it's not, that'd be tomorrow. But I'm just saying that I think this is the right thing to do. Um, and I just think that we should work towards this. If we want to be competitive with other municipalities and more and more municipalities are coming online with this now, I just, I just think it makes sense to, to look at this.
Okay.
I agree with you. Can I just clarify? So if we have paid parental leave, can they also use the current policy, which is sick and vacation? Can they add that to the paid parental? Cause that may impact our workforce at some point too.
So they're entitled, anyone who has a baby or, or a husband or wife who has a, a baby has FMLA, which is 12 weeks of unpaid. They can use their paid leave in that. Um, so this wouldn't extend the leave. It's still 12 weeks.
Got it.
But a portion might be funded by the city and a portion by their accumulated leave. Currently it's all funded by their accumulated leave. And we do have very few people who go without pay, um, just because of the generous leave that we provide. Um, I don't think it's many that would spend.
So normally people take 12 weeks and our current policy says you have to use sick and vacation to get up to that 12 weeks.
Correct.
But may, uh, right, if we change this policy, they may be able to use their paid parental leave and save their vacation for vacation or.
But the 12 weeks period wouldn't change.
I say it's 12 weeks regardless. So I think that's important too, just so obviously our workforce isn't impacted. But I think it makes sense too. I, I think it may make sense to start with a graduated, maybe not a hundred percent at six weeks.
So, so I guess there's a consensus that we should, we should allow you to consider it in the contract negotiations and we'll leave it up to you folks to determine the, the length and the measure of, uh, what it should be. Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Boy, it's really raining outside.
Yes, it is.
Uh, update on the city auditor recruitment.
Yes, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Commissioners. So as we noted in the cam, the recruitment closed on Sunday, September 11th. 16 resumes were received for the auditor position. Our vendor, SGR, selected eight candidates that possess credentials, education, experience and certifications for the position. We shared with you resumes of those eight candidates. Uh, we now request direction from the city commission on how you would like to proceed with the selection process. Um, there are many options. Uh, you may interview each, uh, person you're interested individually. Uh, you can propose a, um, a nomination at a future meeting or hold public interviews. I think the city attorney may also give specifics on appointments and how that process works as well.
You look shocked.
I, I am. What is it that we're?
City auditor appointment.
Right. What's the question?
Well, I think that, I think that we should ask the city manager's office to whittle it down to maybe three candidates from the eight. Does that make sense? I don't think we want to interview eight people. So, um, uh.
But the, the, you may want to, we'd have to go back and look at, I, I can't remember how they did it with the process I went through. Um, the city manager really puts him in a tough spot because it's a fellow charter officer.
Yeah.
So he's going to disqualify folks potentially that.
Well, let the panel who's been doing, who's been, who's been.
The recruiting firm.
The recruiting firm. So let them pare it down to three.
Right.
With the inclusion of our current acting city auditor being one of those three.
So that's two.
So it's down to two. Well, he's part of the, the eight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we should stop it right now and make it happen.
Greg, how much have we spent to date on, on the contract?
I'm just saying. He's sitting here, he's.
I can tell you that the contract was originally for 24,900. We have paid the first of three invoices of 8,100. There is a second increment that is due shortly of another 8,200, I believe.
So two thirds is due momentarily. So they've done two thirds of the work.
Correct.
So they're about 16 out of the 24. I mean, I'm willing to save $8,000 and hire Mr. Riley right now, actually.
Do we have to pay them the remainder if we make a decision?
Say it again?
We can talk to them.
I said, do we have to pay the remainder of the balance to the recruiting firm?
Interestingly enough, and this may be a technicality, but I have not found any actual service agreement that was ever signed or executed by the former city manager.
Really?
So as far as we know.
We still, we still, you can't.
Ethically, I, I would ask that question.
We still want to do the right thing.
Right.
Right.
Mister, mister.
I'd have to look into that if we haven't been provided a contract. I don't know. I haven't seen one either, but that doesn't mean, uh, if you can't find it, we probably will have to look into that.
Alan.
We should have a contract, yes.
Can you start over? What'd you just say?
I said, if there has, if we haven't been provided a contract to review, I mean, obviously there should be a contract. If there is no contract, we need to take a look at that because, uh, we have to have a permissible mechanism for us to pay this, uh, this recruiter.
SGR, Strategic Government Resources.
So you're saying, you're saying if there's no contract, we can't pay them?
If there's no contract, we have to find the proper mechanism to pay them because, um, for public money to be paid, we, we need to have a proper mechanism. So we might have to do it in the form of a settlement or something of that sort.
How did we pay the first invoice?
I don't know. I know nothing about this. I haven't been involved at all. So we have to look into it.
Yeah, I would think so. Typically, a contract, um, a procurement process should have been followed to, to get us here. It, it, it concerns me if this is correct information I'm receiving today in reference to this, then we need to probably halt everything we're doing until we get something legally binding in place to, uh, protect the city's interests.
Yeah. Well, we'll take a look at that immediately.
Well, um, Alan, you should, you should make the commission aware of a legal concept of quasi-contract.
Well, with the city government, you cannot have, we, we litigated this with, uh, with, uh, Scott Israel in the 911 debate, you know, and it went all the way up to the, uh, Florida Supreme Court.
Right.
There is no contract with the city of Fort Lauderdale or any municipality unless it's in writing.
So you're saying if there's no contract in writing, then there's no contract?
That's, that's how we prevail.
That's what he's saying.
Scott Israel was trying to get a whole lot of money from the city and he wasn't able to because it wasn't in writing.
All right. So I think this conversation started with Commissioner Glassman saying, well, how much more do we owe on the contract if we were to stop right now and appoint Mr., Mr. Riley? So, um.
And there is no contract.
We issued a purchase order.
So they're two separate issues right now. Um, do you want to go ahead and, and appoint our acting city auditor as our city auditor and then leave the issue of contract and payment up to our city attorney to deal with? Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
But, but is we started out talking about paying a contract that doesn't exist?
Well, that's something.
So now we're going to sweep that under the rug and deal with something else. I mean, this is an issue if there's no contract in play.
Right. But let them deal with that.
Let them deal with that.
Yeah.
Is that simple?
Hey, that's why we have lawyers. But the question now is, do we want to continue with the, with the process? And is there a consensus?
I think we should go with the current auditor and then we need to look into this contract that's not there.
I think that's a separate issue. Uh, Vice Mayor, what are your thoughts?
Yeah. So I think, uh, auditor's been doing a great job and, uh, I'm very comfortable moving forward with, uh, appointing him as the, as the auditor.
Okay. How about Commissioner Maritas? What are your thoughts?
Yes, I already said that. Um, I do agree also, and I, our charter officers serve at the will of the commission. So if a new commission comes in and they choose to make a change, then of course they can do so. So I think at this point, I definitely feel comfortable, um, allowing him to have the permanent position, whatever, however we do that, I guess, a vote in one of our meetings. So I'm in favor of that.
I'm, I'm in agreement with, with, with that as well. I know I was next, uh, to, to, that you were going to ask the question to. But, um, more concerning to me is this contract that is missing. I mean, we have processes that we follow here, and we 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 hang our hats on that, and 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 people are being paid with no contract. I mean, who who authorized them to move this far without a contract? I know that we, as a commission, said we wanted to follow this path, but where is this contract?
Well, I'm just getting bits and pieces now, but presumably, a purchase order was issued pursuant to a proposal. But again, I I'm just getting bits and pieces. We're going to need to look at it, and we can certainly report back on those details.
How quickly can we get back to us with this report?
Hopefully, maybe we can get you something tonight. If not, then certainly by next meeting.
Thank you, Alan. I appreciate it.
Okay, so there's a consensus to move forward to appoint our current acting city auditor as our city auditor, and congratulations.
So we'll go ahead and prepare a an appointment resolution, and then we'll have to draft up a contract for your review and consideration.
Right, okay.
Take a bow.
Thank you.
Welcome.
At a retirement.
Now, your first job is to audit what just happened.
Did you what? What was that?
Audit the contract.
Audit what just happened. With the contract.
What happened?
Okay, business seven, discussion rescheduling city commission dates. I only saw one conflict. Does anyone see any just the January conflict, moving it to from the third to the fourth? Did you see anything else?
Actually, you know, I look back at some of the meetings that we had. I had requested in I don't know why Chris never brought it forward, but for January, you know, that's one of those long months. I actually requested I will not be back, and I had requested if he could do the 10th and the 24th, which still gives us two weeks between and two weeks after. He's I don't know why he never did bring it forward. I did have that conversation with him before he left. I think I even had that conversation when we talked about the dates here, because that's what my notes show. That's that's one request that I would have, that if we could do the 10th and 24th in January instead of the.
Well, let's see how many weeks we're going to be apart. Hold on.
It 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 works out.
Wait a minute, let's see.
Okay.
December, our December meetings are the sixth and the sixth and the 20th, right? So it does kind of work out. It's just a two, well.
It works out before and also after, because it's got that extra week at the end. We don't come back until February 7.
I have no objection to that. If you want to make the next commission, if you say and that that would all so the commission that would happen after Martin Luther King would be pushed to the 24th, right?
Correct, which also is easier than doing it the day after Martin Luther King holiday.
I agree. Is there any objection to the 10th and the 24th for the January 2023 meetings?
No.
Nope. We're good?
Okay.
Well.
I object to that.
I'm going to change my calendar.
I object on behalf of the new.
Commissioner Glassman, I guess it's just you and me, and if you don't show up, I guess it's just me.
Hey, did I object to moving this meeting?
Hey, you don't have a call anyway.
This meeting to Thursday, right? From Tuesday for you, so.
We should ask the future commissioners.
And who would they be?
Just do it.
We'll make it a campaign issue since everything else is. Okay.
Mayor, may I keep going?
I can't stop you.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to know, are we also going to be looking at January 2024 on this, or do you want to wait on that?
Oh, I think the next commission should.
It's listed here.
Should participate in that discussion.
In the 2024.
Yeah, they should participate in that decision.
Well, they're not participating in January 2023.
Well, we had to make a decision tonight.
We had to make decisions. Okay, I have one more request.
Oh, God, yes.
Hear me out. Hear me out.
Yes.
Can we? It's just for one day. Can we move March 7th to March 8th?
What's happening on March 7?
I can't tell you.
He's traveling.
Cruise.
It's just one day. One day.
Is that a seven-day cruise?
I can't tell you. One day. One day, March 7th to March 8th. Is that okay?
I I don't have any input, but I will be traveling extensively into my new position, so I'll be in and out of the country till that time. So there's a possibility I could be put in the same situation. So I think he should should have the flexibility to go on.
I think we should let the next commission make that decision. I mean, I have no objection right now.
He's got to David's got to set the calendar.
All right, David.
It's just one day.
All right, so move it to the 8th.
Thank you very much.
All right.
It's a tough crowd, very tough crowd. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, just so just to confirm, January 10th and 24th will be the two meeting days?
In January.
In January, and we are moving March 7th through to March 8th.
Correct.
In 2023.
And just to keep it in the back of your mind, for January 2024, if we could maybe look just like we just did and get it away from that two holidays, if we could look at January 9th and 23rd, which would be doing exactly what we just did.
You're booked you're booked in 2024, too?
Mm-hmm.
All booked, all booked, man.
Okay. Well, we'll deal with that in 2020.
We'll deal with it, but I'm just putting it out there.
Okay, you put it out there.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, all right, very good. That concludes all the business items, and then we have a closed-door session. But do we want to do the city commission reports and the city manager report before we do the closed door?
We have a CRA.
Well, that's we're still part of the conference meeting right now.
Okay.
Why don't we do the commission reports?
Why don't we do the CRA?
Because that that's a different meeting. We're still in the conference meeting. I mean, I have very little to to say, and I just.
Go ahead.
Can you wait another 20 minutes? You don't mind, do you?
I'm good.
Yes. Okay, all right, we'll 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 suspend the city conference, the city commission conference meeting, and we'll we'll go into the CRA meeting. Please call the roll for attendance.
Commissioner Moritas?
Here.
Commissioner Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Here.
Vice Chair Sorenson?
Here.
Chair Trentalas?
Here. All right, start with the agenda. M1, motion approving minutes of September 6, 2022. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Moving seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Chair Trentalas?
Yes. M2, motion rejecting all proposals for RFP 12642-925, purchase and development of CRA property. Anyone have any questions with regard to that? There being none, please call the roll. Excuse me, I need I need a motion.
Moved.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
No.
Vice Chair Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Chair Trentalas?
Yes. R1, resolution amending Resolution 1907 and Resolution 2204, clarifying conditions for closing on the CRA property located at 713 717 and 723 Northwest 3rd Avenue in Fort Lauderdale, and delegating authority to the executive director to take certain actions. Mr. Castle, do you want to comment on this? Please come up. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Okay. Good afternoon, sir.
Hi, hi, thank you for hearing me. My first time appearing, so forgive me if I don't know the exact procedure. Is Lynn Solomon here? Lynn may be a in a better position. It's just a tweaking of the resolution previously approved by the CRA. Right, Lynn? Yeah.
Is there a question?
No, I filled out a form in case I had to say anything.
You're just here to support the measure. Okay.
Yeah, so I think you.
That's fine.
Good.
Yeah, you're better off sitting out there.
Oh. Thank you for your indulgences.
Any anyone else wish to speak on R1?
I'm good.
Okay, the the resolution's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency, amending Resolution Number 19-07 and Resolution Number 22-04, delegating authority to the executive director to take certain actions and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Chair Trentalas?
Yes, and R1's approved. Our final item is R2 regarding the American Legion Post 220. This waiving the maximum funding amount and percentage of funding of eligible project costs under the Property and Business Improvement Program, approving an additional property and business improvement program forgivable loan in the amount of $416,900 to the American Legion Robert Bethel Post 220, Inc., for the substantial renovation and expansion of the American Legion Post 220 at 1455 Cistrunk Boulevard, and authorizing the executive director to execute any and all related documents and delegating authority to the executive director to take certain actions. Mr. Fernandez, you have anything to say?
Lord.
Soccer. He wants that soccer game.
Yes. Anyone have any questions with regard to this item?
I do have a question.
All right.
Thanks, Mayor. Maybe if I could ask Clarence this question, because it just I'm just trying to get these numbers equal to what the CAM says with regards to the backup.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Clarence. So Clarence, when I read the the CAM, it looks like we're looking at a total cost of 700 and hold on one second.
Forty.
740,000.
Yes.
But if I look at Exhibit D on the CAM, it's actually Exhibit D on the top, but it's listed below as Exhibit 6, page 7 of 20.
Yes.
If you look at that, the total looks like it's $811,900. What's the difference between the 740 in the CAM versus the project funding at 811,900?
The 740 is actual hard cost. The additional 71,900 is soft cost to include architectural fees, Phase 1, 2, and 3 of a DRC committal, I mean, submittal, and the construction documents and permitting, construction administration.
Okay, but here's the question. You said our cost, and I understand that. American Legion's doing 26773 for the first tranche, but also now adding another 20.
Yes.
So that total is $46,773 on behalf of the applicant.
Yes.
Okay, if you add the $46,773 to the 740, you still don't hit $811,900. There's still a delta there.
Okay, let me see. 740.
I thought you weren't a math teacher.
Excuse me?
I thought you weren't a math teacher.
I'm not. I was.
740 plus, yeah, 740 plus.
Bob Ojek with CRA.
There's still about a there's still about a difference of $25,000.
Yeah, so the the American Legion, their commitment for the for the project initially was $25,000, and they're providing another $20,000. However, they've actually spent a little bit more than $25,000. They've spent, well, 26 so far.
Right.
You know, on architectural fees.
26773.
Correct, yeah.
Right, and now they're going to do another 20.
Correct, yeah.
That adds up.
No, but no, they're going to do another 20 in addition to the 25 they've already committed.
They're doing another 20 in addition to the 26.
Right.
Right, that's a total of 46.
No, no, they're doing additional 20 in addition to the 25 that they are committed to, but they've overs they've spent a little more than than 25. They end up spending 26, so they're actually into their next 20 already.
What's the total contribution from the American Legion?
It would be 20 plus 25 plus 20.
That's 45.
45, yeah.
I'm giving the benefit of the doubt. I'm saying it's 46773. If you add 46773 to the 740 that's listed as the project cost in the CAM, that still is like 786,000. Exhibit 6 says the project is 811,900. I'm trying to find out the delta of that $25,000.
Well, you have 740 for hard costs. You have another 71,900 for soft costs. That's 811,900.
That's what I just said.
Right, and then and then we have already approved 350.
Yes.
And 25, which is 375, and that leaves 436,900. And then the American Legion is coming up with an additional 20. That leaves 416,900.
That's what?
That's 416,900.
You know what? I either I'm not communicating or something's wrong here. There's a missing 25,000, but you know what? I'm okay. This is the most decorated person in the African-American community from Fort Lauderdale, from World War II, in support of the project. I'm just saying that the numbers are not adding up, and I understand that we are contributing about. This is in front of us because we're contributing 94% of the project, correct?
Yeah.
This is above the 90% threshold? That's why this is in front of us?
But what he's talking about is he. It's missing here. The numbers are there, and it's still the same number.
It's okay, gentlemen, I'm I'm okay. I I you can get to me later. Let me know where that 25,000, trust me, there's a difference of 25,000. I'm just trying to, you know, find out where that was, but as I said, I'm in support of the project. It's in front of us because we're contributing 94% of the project, right? We're above the 90% threshold.
Yes, we'll be contributing 95%.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm I'm fine. I'm supportive. Thank you for the work that you guys do. I think it'll be a beautiful project.
Roberto Fernandez, did you want to say anything? Are you just as supportive of it?
You're better off going to soccer game.
Okay.
I don't think there's soccer.
All right, you don't have to say anything.
I think it's canceled.
Any further questions or comments with regard to this item? Is this is the is this American Legion Hall open to the open to the public, like for rental and things like that? It's not a closed club, right? It's closed, you can you have to you can be a member, but it's still open to the public, right? All right. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency, waiving the maximum funding amount under the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency's Property and Business Investment Improvement Program for the project located at 1455 Southwest 6th Street, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 3 through 311, approving additional funding in the amount of 416,900, approving the First Amendment to the Property and Business Investment Improvement Agreement, authorizing the executive director to execute the First Amendment and all related instruments, and further delegating authority to the executive director to take certain actions and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Chair Trentalas?
Yes, and the resolution's approved. Looking forward to the ribbon cutting, gentlemen. Very good.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Any further business of the CRA? There being none, the CRA meeting is now concluded. We'll resume back to our conference meeting. Let us begin with commission reports. Commissioner Moritas, you have any anything to report today?
Just quickly, I want to congratulate you for a great speech, the state of the city. It was really remarkable hearing everything that's going on in our city, and it's it was great working with you all to make those projects happen. One issue in District 1 that's just getting bigger is the homelessness, and especially around the the Target area, Oakland and Federal, and the encampment that's kind of growing right there. Is there I did tell neighbors I'd bring it up, and I don't know if there are other areas of our city that are also growing in terms of that problem, and possibly anything. I know our new panhandling ordinance has taken effect. Maybe we could get a little additional. I don't see the police police presence in that area. Make sure they're not panhandling in our streets like our ordinance prohibits. I don't know, Greg or police, anyone have any thoughts I can share back?
Certainly, we can follow up on that, and we can also give you some updates. Mr. Hardo can share.
I just would caution that our ordinance does not ban panhandling.
I know, people can't stand in the street, ask for money.
And and there's a temporary.
Or do anything in the streets.
And we've just temporarily suspended enforcement because we presented the new ordinances to the court, and we have a hearing tomorrow with the court to try to dissolve the temporary injunction.
That was on the previous ordinance, though.
No, no. So we, what we've done is we've passed these new ordinances. We did start enforcing it, but on advice of counsel, we just suspended it just this last few days because we have a hearing before the court to present our new ordinances to the court saying here, we now abide by the law, dissolve the, the, the temporary, the temporary injunction.
Because I, I've been to that intersection recently, and there's a guy in a wheelchair going from, from lane to lane. The light is green. He dodges the cars. He's gonna die, okay? And we need to do something to help him get out of the way.
I completely agree, but the attorneys that are fighting us on this apparently don't care.
Okay. All right.
So our current ordinance that we just passed is not in effect yet. We cannot enforce it.
Right now, we're not. And we'll find out tomorrow if, if anything changes.
Okay.
Anthony, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to mention some of the other things that we're doing. So Task Force, which is a group that we've engaged with to help with homelessness, they've engaged the, the people that are at that intersection. We've also been working with the property owner on putting up no trespassing signs, as well as working with the police department to have an extended presence there for a period of time to try and address it. So we are taking steps. We can put together a better summary for you and send it over to your office so you're aware of.
Okay, that, that might help, so then I could share it with neighbors. Now, when you say the property owners, is that the Publix? And then how far does their property extend? Because I believe most of the problem is right around the bus station.
Right. So it does not extend into the right of way, obviously. So the bus station is, is in the right of way. But right about where you see that hedge and that little pony wall is right where the property line is.
Okay, so right where the hedge starts is right of way. Okay, so Publix currently does not have a no trespassing sign?
Correct. Or they, they might have installed it by now, but Luisa was working with the property owners to get them to install that and work on enforcing no trespassing in the area to a greater extent than what we have today.
What about the rest of the property, the Target and the mall? Is that all one ownership? Probably separate.
I'm not sure if it's one ownership. I believe it's multiple owners, but Luisa's working with, with, I, when I say the property, I mean the whole thing.
The whole parcel.
The whole parcel with Publix and, and Target and everything else.
Okay, super. Yes, if we could get a recap of that with what we're doing with the no trespassing sign, I don't know if we need to work with the county on the bus stop. I mean, it is not being used for a bus stop. I mean, I know it's hard to enforce.
There, there, there is a county ordinance that prohibits obviously sleeping and camping out there. So it comes down to enforcement. Enforcement is challenging, though, because you have to have officers observe them. Obviously, sometimes it's evident, but if you have somebody just sleeping on a bench, they, you know, they have to, from an evidentiary standpoint, we have to literally sit there and make sure that they're not waiting for a bus.
Okay, so Anthony, maybe when I get a recap of this, we wait until we find out what the court says about our current ordinance, so that we know what we can enforce.
Okay.
So, thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anything further?
That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner McKenzie, are you still in the room? Do you have any report? Okay. Commissioner Glassman?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. Congratulations. Dan Marino had another terrific open house. They do incredible work over there. If you have not been in that facility, I would recommend it. Victoria Park Civic Association met. I wanted to thank everyone that were involved in the nine eleven Cities Memorial Service. Mayor, it was a pleasure to join you that day. I, it's such a great ceremony every year, and I just think it's amazing. And that facility is amazing. The Historic Firehouse Museum is a tremendous place. If people haven't been in there, you need to go in there and check out that as well. I attended the International Swimming Hall of Fame Board of Directors meeting. I will tell you the interesting thing about Solid Waste, and we'll get a report soon. The ILA has been given to all thirty-one municipalities in Broward County. Everyone is reviewing it now. And we had a meeting out in Sunrise on Tuesday, September thirteenth, where the delegates came from every single municipality in person at the Sunrise Civic Center. And in October, we'll be talking about that. And also, the County Commission will be dealing with it on October eleventh, and I'll, I'll attend that County Commission meeting as well. Also want to echo Commissioner Moritas, Mayor, on the state of the city. It was great and, and a great facility. People, if you have not been in the Parker Playhouse, now called the Parker, just a tremendous addition to our city. I've been attending the, all these candidate debates. It's been very interesting. I went to the Fort Lauderdale Forum, actually at seven fifteen in the morning, the day after the State of the City Address. And I also just recently attended the Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Associations. They just had one at the Y on Sistrunk. It's interesting to attend these candidate forums, these candidate debates. Sometimes it's hard to believe that they're talking about the same city that I've been looking at for the last four and a half years. But it's okay. It's okay. I told.
Obviously, they didn't attend the State of the City Address.
Well, actually, some of them did. I won't tell you what some of them said, but that's okay.
Okay.
But it is interesting. It's sometimes unrecognizable. I did recommend to the Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Association's president that perhaps in the future they have a fact-checker on stage, so that when people say things, that can be an automatic fact-check. Just my opinion. I did attend in Miami the twenty-twenty-two ULI Vision Awards. One of our city's own, Alec Bogdanoff, was recognized as a Young Leader of the Year for his work with Resiliency and Sea Level Rise. But I was also really pleased to see how many Fort Lauderdale building projects made it as finalists in the different categories. I don't think any, any one of them came away with the top prize, but there were many that were there, and I wanted to say congratulations to all of them. They must have had about a thousand people in that ballroom for that event at the Marriott Marquis in downtown Miami. It only took me two hours to get there. It was really a. So if anyone ever complains about traffic in Fort Lauderdale, let me just tell you, spend a little time navigating around Miami and have a, and have a great time. I wanted to thank the city manager. I went on a nice tour the other day. We did a nice tour of Sailboat Bend. We're gonna look to do things in terms of streets game improvements in Sailboat Bend. Also wanted to mention, let's see, just a few more things. This Friday, I guess, Mayor in your absence, I'll be receiving some of the rabbis in town for the High Holidays, the Jewish High Holidays. And that starts Sunday evening and ends Tuesday evening. That's Rosh Hashanah. And then October fourth sunset through October fifth sunset is Yom Kippur. So lastly, of course, I would want to wish all of our Jewish friends and neighbors a very happy and healthy New Year. Shana Torah. The year is actually fifty-seven eighty-three. Fifty-seven eighty-three. Ask me, I don't know where that last thousand years went, but it just went by in a breeze. But we're up to fifty-seven eighty-three. It's an old calendar.
From which date, from which date are those years calculated?
You know, I actually believe if I, and I'll have to go back and look at this, they.
Is that from when Moses?
No.
No? Abraham?
The Hebrew calendar, I think they actually try to, you know, I'm, I'm gonna have to get back to you on that, because I, I have a few things running through my head, and I don't want to give out bad information.
Okay.
But I do know that it's a lunar calendar, but it is fifty-seven eighty-three, and I'm trying to figure out, two thousand, three thousand.
I think it's either, it has something to do with, with either Moses or Abraham. I think it's Moses, though.
Is it Moses or Abraham? I don't know.
I don't, I don't remember, though. I didn't go to Hebrew school.
How long ago was creation? How long ago was creation?
How long?
Does it go back that far?
I don't know. I wasn't there.
How long?
A debate?
I know I have a little gray, but I wasn't at.
Pastor, do you know how long ago was creation?
Long time ago.
A long time ago?
Long time ago.
Okay, so anyway.
Adam and Eve came around.
There you go. Mayor, I'm gonna get back to you on the, on that question. When was the beginning?
Was it meant to stump you? I was just curious.
No, that's okay. It's fine. I will have a District Two President's Roundtable on Thursday, the twenty-ninth. And then I should mention that on Friday, October seventh, is the Downtowner of the Year Award honoring Charlie Ladd at the First Baptist Church. I wanted to also congratulate the chimney house right over here in Sailboat Bend that celebrated its tenth anniversary. That home dates back most likely to around nineteen forty, and they did an amazing job restoring that property. And happy tenth anniversary to them for restoring that and keeping that business viable during the pandemic. That's it for me, Mayor. Thanks.
Okay, great. Vice Mayor?
Yep. Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, again, great job with State of the City, capturing just, I think, great successes. Let's see, wanted to touch on, I've always tried to keep you all up to date on the good progress we've all made with flight patterns at Fort Lauderdale Hollywood International Airport, working collectively with FAA to make those changes, to limit overflights over our neighborhoods, and that's all been going really well. We have a aviation consultant that we've used throughout this to help kind of guide that, shape our conversations, and they've been excellent. And they're seeking to continue to do some of the monitoring of the flights, to ensure that FAA is doing what they're, they promised they do, which the FAA has really been a great partner in this. So, City Manager, I just wanted to, I know that's something you and I had talked about, that I should probably bring up to the Commission to give that little update, and then just want to ask for, you know, support to continue that monitoring and engagement with the consultant. So I'll just stop there. City Manager, am I saying that all right?
Yeah, I believe the last request was for them to provide us with an updated proposal for the scope, to have additional reporting measures.
Right, and the budget as well.
And the budget as well, yeah. And I think, what was, Alan, I want to say the monthly budget, three thousand, four thousand, something like that?
It was something like that on the previous one, but we'll see what they, they want. I presume it'll be similar, but we have to see their numbers.
Did you need anything else from the Commission? Okay, that's good. So, and Commissioner McKenzie, we will got a contract. We'll make sure we have a contract, to your point, your point. We'll make sure we get that tied up. So, okay, that's that. Tunneltop Park, and speaking with some of the members of the community, and, and some are here tonight, we were talking about, as we think about Tunneltop Park moving towards completion, naming possibilities, and just wanted to share the, to, as, as you all kind of consider and think through things, Ron Sentimore has a, you know, possibility to think about, amazing dedication and serviced our, our community as we think about naming for that park. So I just want to share that, Mayor, whenever that process might begin.
Because there are other possibilities. Actually, if we were to name something after Ron, I would like to think of something more in where he lived in the Progressive area. But something that we have been working on now with regard to a gift that was, I think I brought this up to the, to the Commission's attention before, is a gentleman, Mr. Jim Laird, who wanted to donate five million dollars to have a park named after himself. And I didn't see five million dollars as being enough to name a park or buy a park space. So I've been working with the trustee of his estate, and, and we've been working with, with the estate to buy art, outdoor art pieces that we could install at, at the Tunneltop Park. And, and five million dollars will buy some really nice pieces of art, you know, somewhere like six or seven pieces that we could, that would be placed in and around the park area. To do so, the family had asked that there be recognition of Mr. Laird at the park site. So we don't necessarily have to name the park after Jim Laird, but we could say like, the Jim Laird Art Park at Tunneltop. Now, adding another name, Ron Sentimore, you know, we can certainly, you know, consider it, but the gift would go away. So certainly from that location. So, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss it. But certainly Ron Sentimore was a great guy who, who, you know, did a lot to the, for the community, so. But I just want you to be aware that that is also gonna come before the Commission, you know, soon.
I think we also have to just realize that right there is Lower Ward Plaza, too. I don't know if that would interfere at all, because that's named already.
Right, Lower Ward is, yeah.
Right, Lower Ward Plaza is named right at where Tunneltop is.
Right.
It's just south of Tunneltop.
But if not there, I would like to name something after Ron, you know, absolutely.
Okay, so as we just think about it.
Yep, yep, yep.
Possibilities there.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Any update on the federal courthouse? Have we, have you talked or gotten any updates, Mayor? I just want to check in on that.
So, so, yes, when I was in Washington, these past couple of days, we met with folks about seeking supplemental funding for the cost of it, because the cost is, like all projects, the costs have increased. So we met with federal officials to talk about the way in which we're going to supplement the existing, I think it was like hundred and forty-seven million dollars that was, that was available for the actual construction. The rest went for the purchase of the land and other things. So, so we're working on that. And there was a meeting today with the Federal Courthouse Committee, but I didn't attend because the purpose of that meeting was to discuss the, the methods of supplemental funding. And they asked that I not go into details, because they're going to start working on it. So just to let the Commission know that we are working on it, I think there is a possibility to secure the supplemental funding. And so we're very optimistic that it will be able to happen. And when we do hear that it's been successful, I will report back to the Commission.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thanks, Mayor. That's all I have.
Okay, great. I just had a few things. September eighth, I attended the farewell event for our Congressman Ted Deutsch, very nice event at the Levon Center at NSU. We also had the grand opening in your district, the Mystic Lobster Roll on Seventeenth Street Causeway.
Just had a roll the other day.
Yeah.
Pretty good there, right?
Pretty good, yeah.
Very nice, yeah.
On September eleventh, I attended the, the, of course, we had, we had a really wonderful commemorative ceremony at the, at the firehouse down in Sailboat Bend. And it was a very touching moment, and I really appreciate all those people who participated and attended the September eleventh event. Thank you for being there, and let us continue to, to recognize it and to celebrate it and to never forget what September eleventh was all about. I attended a barbecue at Rabbi Slavatiki's house, who had a fundraiser for Israeli war veterans. It was a well-attended event. Many people from the community were there. And I just want to say with regard to the State of the City Address, I want to thank everyone on staff who put that together. It just was an amazing compilation of work that, a lot of the work was already done in terms of the, the videos, and, but just putting together the script and the, and the talent and, you know, everything that went together and, and the lighting and just, you know, and I want to thank the Parker for hosting the event there at the, at that beautiful, beautiful venue that we now have in our city. But it was just, it was a message that needed to be said, and you folks did it in an amazing way. And I just want to thank you all for making that happen. But, but also, I cannot let the accolades end without commending every member of this Commission for allowing those successes to happen. I mean, this can-do Commission, when we took office back in twenty-eighteen, we made, we made it a commitment to this community that we were gonna get things done. And all the things that were on those videos were things that, that we have done as a Commission. And, and, and I think it's just a, a great testament to, to everyone here who has sat these last several years to, to say that, you know, this city has really moved forward in so many good directions, and will continue to as we, as we contemplate new projects, innovative and, and, and important, that are gonna maintain the viability and the sustainability of this city going forward in the future. So thank you, everybody, for being part of that. And then these last two days, forty-eight hours, I think it was, we calculated, Mr. City Manager, we left on Monday, came back last night, the fly-in with the Greater Fort Lauderdale Chamber of Commerce. There were about sixty, sixty-five people who attended from this community. And we met with a lot of really important people. Started out with a dinner with Labor Secretary Marty Walsh, and continued through the days, the following day, Nancy Pelosi and Congressman Jim Clyburn from South Carolina, who's the Majority Whip, Steny Hoyer, I forget the lady's name, who's head of the Black Congressional Caucus. I met her for the first time, but she says she, she and her husband love boating, and so she's coming to our boat show. So that would be great. And just, and then at the same time, in between all these, these appearances from public officials, the City Manager, myself, and other staff members were able to meet on three occasions with the Department of Transportation to talk about funding a lot of the transportation projects that we have been talking about, the, the train tunnel, Tesla tunnel, City Hall, and now possibly even the police station. These, some of the definitions for some of these projects will capture a lot of what we're doing. So I think we really learned a lot, and definitely time well spent. So with that being said, Mr. City Manager, do you have any report to make?
Yes, I have two points, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioner. So I hope that you've had a chance to review the unsolicited P-three proposal for City Hall. As you know, staff has been looking at ways to address space issues, the maintenance of the existing building, and how we could be cost-efficient with respect to office space for government operations. So this has been an effort that has been going on for some time. From my documented research, I see that this effort has been at least documented since twenty-eighteen or even earlier. So at this time, we want to receive direction from the Commission on this proposal that was received. If this is an opportunity that you would like for staff to move forward with, and if so, City Attorney can provide us guidance on how that may happen.
So if this, if you're inclined to proceed going forward, as we have with the other P-threes, we would bring forth to you a resolution, which would start the competitive process from the Statute two fifty-five oh six five. And then you would determine the amount of days that we would have that out there, anywhere from twenty-one days to eleven hundred and twenty. And then during that time period, we'd see if any other proposals come through, and then follow the process as we have in the past. If we get other proposals, you'd rank them. If we don't, then you make a selection if you want to continue going forward. And then if that's the case, you give us authority to start negotiating, and then we start doing the financial analysis and so on and so forth.
I think it's an exciting offer. I'd certainly support it, and I would encourage the rest of the Commission to, to give the go-ahead. I think, you know, it's finally happening. And like I said, when we were in Washington, we found ways to even fund the whole thing. So, you know, I hope the Commission can support the idea of bringing forth a resolution, so we can then invite other people to make their, make their proposals and, and get this thing moving forward. Does that make sense?
Why do we need a P-three instead of an RFP? I mean, are they gonna own it? Are we not gonna own it anymore?
It's, say it again?
So why would, why do we need a P-three?
We're still gonna own it.
Okay. So what's, why not an RFP? Why don't we just go out? I mean, a P-three is a partnership, so what is their partnership contribution?
So with the P-three, what we leverage is time. They, there's a, these are proposal on the table. It certainly allows the city to construct a project, which quicker time. The P-three also leverages the private equity, available capital that the, the partner can come with if it's negotiated. But a traditional RFP would require us to do a much lengthier procurement and.
Right. So, so in terms of the financials.
I'm sorry, if I could just jump in also. Part of the proposal, I believe, and there's some options, and there's some flexibility in there, but there's an operational standpoint as well, where I think there's a component where they would operate the building. There's certain private aspects to it, similar to what was contemplated with the Joint Governmental Center, where there would be some operational benefit there of having that corporation there to do that. And there's several models. Again, we don't know all the details, but as we're still digging through it.
Okay, so, so we just, with the Five Ash P-three, we just said that the city would borrow the money. So if this P-three for the City Government Center is them financing it, we've just shown with the Five Ash P-three that we can borrow money cheaper. So I don't understand how that would be a benefit financially to the city if the P-three was funding it or borrowing the money. So that's one concern I have. Interest rates are high. They're getting higher, so they're probably gonna borrow the money, I doubt.
And again, it's just to accept the proposal and then consider it. We can, just like with the water plant, we can modify. We can, just like with the water plant, we can modify it during the process. But this just gets the process started. I agree with you 100%. The city can finance things better. And after this week, we found out that we can, that there may even be forgivable loans out there, which would certainly cut down the costs. But I think this is just to get the process started.
Yeah, but once these balls start rolling, they're hard to stop. I don't know if I want to push that ball right now without understanding the financial differences between a traditional RFP. I don't, where are we talking about doing this? This piece of land or...
Part of the issue, too, is they're walking up to us with a design criteria package done complete. The design's there, the design criteria package is there, the needs assessment is there, everything is there. So it's, that's already done.
But it might not be what we need. We haven't even discussed what we needed. I mean, I guess we did.
Well, we, I think a lot of it, well, again, this is unsolicited. So we, this is what you're looking at now. The package you received explains in there exactly what, it, it's all detailed in there.
So, no, Commissioner, what Alan is saying is that when we were working with the Joint Government Center project, we paid a consultant to identify what the, what the needs were for the city. The county participated in that, and they identified their needs. So the needs assessment has already been made. We've already paid for that. We've already identified it. This particular unsolicited proposal, I believe, took that package and incorporated in their proposal. So, so they took the needs assessment and then, and then added their design criteria to it to create a proposal that they're submitting to the city. So, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel anymore. It's already been done.
I understand. If we don't have to reinvent it, why don't we just use it for our own RFP? I just don't, who, when we did the Joint Government Center, we were paying them rent. Somebody else owned the project. And that, that's what P3s are.
I'm not saying that they, I'm not saying I agree with all the components of that P3. We're just looking to, we just are, we can't look at it until we accept it to look at it. That's the way it works.
And the P3, remember, under the statute, we have to own it. There is no P3 where they own it.
Well, then they might own the building where we pay them rent, something?
No, 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 no.
We ultimately have to own, whether it's, ultimately, we have to own everything.
Yeah, after 50 years or whatever.
But we, we do, under the statute, have to own it.
After we pay them a lot in rent.
What, we pay rent?
It depends on the structure of, of how it's set up and how it's financed. I mean, the county, there were several options that were put on the table where there were some availability payments that were made. The county was on a different track because they wanted to actually expedite their payments where they were going to pay those off a lot quicker than the city was contemplating.
But for this proposal, isn't the city financing this project?
Certainly. We are, we are the ones that have that potential to finance it. And additionally, with the news that we discovered yesterday, there could be even federal loans, 75 years, that could help us even have better ability to, to grasp this. I think that the, the opportunity that exists here is time.
Yeah.
It, it advances a project much quicker than a traditional RFP. Traditional RFP, we would have to start from scratch. We would have to do design criteria package. We would have to do a, a, a design RFP, then a construction RFP. And it would be structured with an extensive amount of timeline. Here, you have something a little more expedited and something that can be performed sooner rather than later. Which, when you look at what we have in, in place right now, we have, you know, a, a building that we need, must maintain. We have also a variety of offices that are in different locations that we must also pay rent. So it's something to consider right now if it's something that you would like to at least consider. That's all that we're asking for right now.
I'm surprised. Have you all, has everyone else met with the proposer about this?
But we got the whole book.
I know I have a book, but I usually meet with people and talk about things.
But we're not, they wouldn't, it wouldn't be appropriate for them to actually do that right now because they're giving...
Until we accept it?
Until we, we start the process. So this is just step one. And just to, to touch on your point with the RFP, the only thing that was done, even though Ziskovich went a little overboard when they weren't asked to, but the only thing that was really done at the Joint Governmental Center was a needs assessment. There was no design criteria package. Ziskovich kind of packaged it in a building that nobody had asked for. But that's all we have is a needs assessment. Here, with the unsolicited proposal, that needs assessment to the mayor's point was extrapolated from the UDPA process and then added, they added their own design criteria package. If you go through the RFP, we then have to pay and go through the entire process of, from scratch to the manager's point of a design criteria package. And that's one of the benefits there. But no, they wouldn't have met with you yet, that that actually would be inappropriate. My recommendation to folks that want to do that on a P3 like this or unsolicited proposal is to wait until after the solicitation period's over. So if we get the ball rolling with the solicitation period at that point in time, because if they meet with you now, they sort of get, they, they, they get a competitive edge, right? They get to sell their product first. If we have somebody else that comes in that wants to do a proposal, the first one in the gate typically has somewhat of an advantage. And that's what we want to avoid to, so we are not gaming the, the process under the statute. So we typically wait until that solicitation period's over before they come to talk to you.
But also, Commissioner, I think that we'll be able to get all that detail you want from an RFP when we open this up to others that will come forward, and they will. And then we have all that time to work on it with the comprehensive agreement or interim agreement or whatever agreements we're doing. But I think we'll be able to hone in on what exactly it is that we think that we want and what we need. But as the city manager said, a lot of that was already established when we had all of that needs assessment, when we were moving forward together with the county.
I guess I'd like to be able to compare it to a RFP. Like at the end of 50 years, how much will we pay for the P3 process? And how much would we pay for the, if we just did a traditional RFP process? Kind of at the end of it, once we own it again? It's interesting, they're doing 75-year loans. Do buildings last 75 years? Maybe the new construction they do. So I'd like to, I guess, see the, the difference. Normally, a P3 is making something.
Right, and that'll be part of the financial, as you know, with, with the other P3s. I don't know if we'll have Deloitte again do the financial analysis, but with the process, we then start, because the money, the $25,000 they pay us goes to defray the cost of, and they probably have to pay more in circumstances like this to get the financial analysis done so we can get those answers.
Right, but then sometimes the financial package changes once we've already accepted it.
And there's flexibility built in the statute for that purpose because the wants and the, there's some flexibility there. If you accept it exactly as it comes in through the door and something doesn't make sense, the statute gives you the ability to make some changes so that both parties can move forward with the project.
Right. I don't know.
Okay. Is there at least a majority that wants to move this forward?
I'm ready to, I'm ready to...
And we can all, you can do the analysis of RFP versus P3. And, and if the decision is, hey, P3 doesn't look good, you can, you can go a different path. We're not handcuffed at all.
And today, you're just giving us guidance. Resolution still has to come before you for your vote on. So you still have an opportunity to discuss it before you vote on the resolution.
Okay.
I guess I still would like to know the numbers of both because we seem to get really far down the road with the P3 process. And then we'll say, well, we're so far down the road that now we can't go back and start an RFP. We've already lost two years. So, so it's like P3 or nothing because we've lost all this time. When I thought in the past, we've said, let's do this on a parallel path and it was...
Yeah, you could do it upfront, and you could also do a time analysis, like, like with Five Ash, like how long would P3 versus RFP take? Yeah.
Yeah, we did that analysis, and we were told it would take at least two more years if we did it.
If you did a RFP. It's much longer usually.
Well, we also had a financial analysis that dramatically changed after we voted on it. So I'm just saying, there's, there's no guarantees on these P3s. They're cheaper, better, faster. Things change.
We'll be cautious.
Right, but I think with Five Ash, and City Manager, correct me if wrong, the cost changed in part because of the increased cost of materials and so forth.
Yeah, once the assumptions were reviewed and once the environmentals and more analysis were done, yes, those are, those assumptions created additional costs, which we are still negotiating on. It's not a done deal.
Look, what we just heard about the police station. Everything is going up from the time that was approved.
I understand. So I guess when we evaluate it, we just can't say that this is, this is the final number or this is, I mean, obviously, we would go up at the same exponential rate that they would go up. But sometimes we get sold things based on things that can change.
Right, yep. Yeah, agreed.